Good morning. And welcome to the April meeting of the Maryland State Board of Education. Pleased to welcome us all to the Nancy S. Grazmick State Education Building, home of the Maryland State Department of Education. This time, I'd like to call on Mr. Schoen to determine whether we have quorum to proceed. We're good to go? All right. Let's dive in. With that, please join me in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. A few housekeeping items. First, all state board of education meetings are recorded. Those recordings serve as our official minutes. The public can access the meeting via livestream from the state board and MSD website and on YouTube. People registered to give public comment can do so either virtually or in person, and we have both signups for a morning block and an afternoon. Meeting videos, agendas, and materials are posted online. And I believe that is it for our housekeeping items. With that, we'll just proceed with a couple remarks before we jump in. I am certainly pleased to open today's meeting of our Board of Education, which is particularly exciting because we are celebrating the month of the young child. As the parent of three young children, this month is particularly special to me. I want to thank our partners for being here. We're going to hear from several of many of them very soon. And thank you for being here and continuing to walk with us alongside us in service of children in families of Maryland. Since my time on this board, we have grounded in three key principles that I just want to continue to lift today: transparency, accountability, and partnership. These principles are the foundation for how we govern, how we lead, and how we drive improvement of public education for all of Maryland students. Today, we get to highlight our state's early childhood education and care ecosystem, which sets the foundation for a lifetime of growth and opportunity for every child. The evidence is overwhelming. When we invest early, we see better outcomes in reading, in mathematics, in attendance, and lifelong learning. But more than that, we see children who are ready to thrive in school and beyond. I do want to take a moment. I believe Sarah Neville Morgan has joined us. We officially approved her last month. Sarah, if you'd please stand. Sarah is the new Assistant Superintendent for the Department of Early Childhood. We're pleased to have her. She comes with extensive experience in the field, supporting and promoting early childhood. Most recent role as Deputy Superintendent in California. Her part of the department exceeds the State Education Agency, the number of people she managed alone. So she's managed some big operations, not only early childhood education, but special education, other services in that role. So we're just so fortunate to have you and particularly starting with us as we celebrate the month of the young child. So thank you for being here. As we think about the progress that's being made in early childhood in the Blueprint era, we have already seen some notable progress. We've seen a 53% increase in Maryland students enrolled in full-day pre-K. This year, nearly 50% of new full-day seats were in private provider settings, which is a promising sign that together, we can deliver affordable, high-quality early care and education, both in public and private settings. And yet, the work ahead of us requires all of us, educators, policymakers, advocates, and families, rowing in the same direction. Partnership has never been more essential. So as we reflect on the close of this year's legislative session, I do want to thank our legislative partners, many of whom are in the room, including advocates. I want to thank for our continued commitment and partnership towards for Maryland students. While the session may be over, our work continues with renewed focus, especially around the core work of schools: improving instruction and advancing student achievement in reading and mathematics. These are not just metrics. They are the building blocks of opportunity, equity, and success for every child in our state. While we remain steadfast in our commitment to the Blueprint for Maryland's future, we also know that more must be done to focus on the core work in schools if we are to realize the gains that Marylanders expect through the investment in the Blueprint. We look forward to deepening our collaboration with lawmakers, local school systems, and stakeholders to bring forth the full promise of the Blueprint in future years. In that spirit of responsiveness and innovation, I am especially proud to highlight our new Feds-to-Eds initiative, which we'll be reviewing later today in partnership with the Governor's Office, Department of Labor, and the Maryland Higher Education Commission. This effort invites recently laid-off federal employees to consider new careers in the classroom. By strengthening outreach and exploring ways to streamline the licensure process — true efficiency — we aim to tap into a pool of experienced, mission-driven professionals who can bring valuable skills and a deep sense of public service into our schools. It's a win for students, it's a win for the workforce, and a win for Maryland. We are also mindful of the federal uncertainty that continues to cast a shadow over state budgets and public education in Maryland and across the country. However, our vision remains unchanged. Last Thursday, Dr. Wright and all 24 superintendents reiterated our commitment to ensuring all Maryland students have equitable access to a high-quality education. And on Friday, Attorney General Brown filed to join a lawsuit related to Title VI enforcement on behalf of the state of Maryland. All means every student, including students of every race, ethnicity, gender, neighborhood, disability status, socioeconomic circumstance, and home language. In Maryland, we will continue to lead with clarity, urgency, and resolve. We will follow state and federal laws, and we will do what's right for children. As we move through today's agenda, let's stay grounded in our shared commitment that every child of every background deserves access to a world-class education. And let's continue to move forward together in partnership towards that vision. Thank you. With that, we will shift to our public comment. A few reminders: speakers will be called on in order of their registration. We will take in-person registrants first, followed by virtual registrants. Zoom is the platform that will be used for virtual public comment. If you experience problems connecting with your device, you may use the audio-only feature and call in using your phone. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Time will be monitored by staff. When time expires, the speaker is permitted to finish their sentence, but is required to make no further remarks. Comments should be directed to the full board, not an individual board member. For future commenters to request accommodations for providing public comment, please contact Charlene Necessary in the state board office no later than 24 hours in advance of the state board meeting date. Board members will not respond to speakers' comments, but will take all comments under advisement. Written statements and other materials should be submitted to Mr. Hans, who will see that copies are made available to all board members. Our first speaker today, we have one in-person participant. First, we have Trish Brennan-Gack, 2025 State of Reading Report. Trish, welcome. Good morning. Great.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Trish Brennan-Gack, and I am the Executive Director of Maryland Reads. This month, we released our annual report, the State of Reading in Maryland 2025. It's time for a comeback after a decade of decline. Today, I'm here to talk about the importance of data and research to inform decision-making and monitor progress. Our report has three primary sections. The first section presents data from NAEP and MCAP. Some key findings from this data include: state funding increased 37% over a 10-year period, while reading and math proficiency rates fell dramatically. 67% of Maryland's 4th-grade students are still not proficient readers. If we were to continue to have a 3% increase every year, it would take over 40 years for Maryland's children to reach the 95% proficiency reach that research tells us is possible. While it's important to understand where we are, it's also important to understand we're making progress. So our team broke down the data by county, showing not only where the needs are the greatest, but how many children in each community are falling through the cracks. These numbers aren't just statistics. They represent tens of thousands of students who are being left behind and whose futures are being shaped by our responses today. Here's what we found. For 4th-grade reading scores, almost half of Maryland school districts had a decline in 4th-grade proficiency rates. Two of the five districts with the highest proficiency rates actually had a decline in proficiency. And three of the five districts with the lowest proficiency rates saw an increase. According to the 2024 MCAP data, 32,538 4th-grade students cannot read proficiently. 34,381 8th-grade students cannot read proficiently. In two grades, that's 66,919 students. We invite everyone to look at page 19 of our report to see how many 4th- and 8th-grade students in your county can't read proficiently. This was eye-opening for us, and it may be for you, too. So what are we going to do? The second part of our report documented the steps the state has taken to improve reading instruction, and we applaud all of you for that work. But there's still more to do, which leads me to the third section of our report, our call to action. Initially, when we drafted this report, we anticipated the legislature to be bold and to stand with Dr. Wright and the state board for their request for coaching funding. They did not, so we had to rewrite the report a little bit. In the beginning of the year, I testified in support of investments in the coaching program for MSD, because research tells us this makes a difference. In all of the debate about the programs to fund and protect, I noticed there was very little focus on whether these programs actually had an impact on students' ability to do read and math. In fact, one legislator asked about graduation rates, but he didn't bother to ask whether those kids could read proficiently. So it's clear there's more work to do to educate the legislature about proficiency rates and the research-based approaches that can help solve this problem.
Thank you for your comments.
We stand ready to partner with you in this work.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you joining us. Next, to our virtual participants, first, we have Dr. Tyler Love, College and Career Readiness Teacher Preparation. Dr. Love.
Thank you, Dr. Michael, State Board of Education members and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and thank you for your dedication to our students, educators, and education system. I speak to you today not as a faculty member from my university, but as an alumnus of one of Maryland's HBCUs, a former Maryland K-12 educator, a full-time teacher educator for over a decade, and an academic scholar with over 100 books, peer-reviewed journal articles, and conference papers on CTE and STEM topics. I want to start by highlighting some of the recent successes of career and technical education, teacher preparation, and career coach preparation programs in Maryland. Recently, an Anarundel County culinary teacher and UMS alum was named a National Teacher of the Year by the Magnet Schools Association. Two other UMS alumni received the State STEM Program of the Year awards from the International Technology and Engineering Educators Association this past month. UMS also has a faculty member and alumni who has named the Region One Teacher/Educator of the Year and is one of only five national finalists for this award from the Association for Career and Technical Education. These demonstrate the quality of the preparation programs that we have right here in our own state of Maryland. Did you know that UMS is currently offering the only MHEC-approved programs that meet all COMAR regulations to licensed CTE teachers in Maryland? And it has the only work-based learning and career counseling preparation certificate program that has been approved by MHEC in alliance with COMAR criteria for the WBL Coordinator endorsement. These are offered in formats that can reach educators across the state. You will not find these programs on state websites, which makes it very difficult for when you talk about Feds-to-Eds later, how will they find these programs to use their occupational expertise to become an educator in these areas? To reach ambitious goals in Blueprint Pillar III, I encourage the board to keep our in-state four-year institutions in mind, as they are a critical part of career and college readiness and the continuum of career and college readiness, especially those with unique, blueprint-aligned teacher and career coach preparation programs. When discussing the Feds-to-Eds later, please continue how educators will find these programs that are unique to our state. In closing, I ask that the board please keep our in-state and four-year institutions, especially our land-grant HBCUs, in mind when reviewing policies, discussing Blueprint, and discussing career and college readiness. We have unique, award-winning programs that we should be strongly encouraging our state stakeholders to lean into, not utilizing these programs to their full capability, diverse viable resources, and funding away from our in-state institutions, helping to strengthen other states' institutions, workforce, and their economy. Our CTE and career coach preparation programs at UMS are here to serve, and we are eager to serve on that on state committees if given the opportunity. Thank you for your time, and please reach out if you have any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Love. We appreciate your comments, and we know you are a unique leader in higher education in our state, and just appreciate your presence and willingness to partner as we move forward. So thank you for being here. Next, we have Sharon Saroff, Special Education. Welcome.
Good morning. I know that this is a month celebrating a lot of different populations, and I am here to celebrate the tail end, and I hope that it is not the end of the time that we recognize and accept students on the autism spectrum. I know what we've been hearing in the news from the federal level, and it is greatly concerning to those of us who are advocates and parents of students with autism. Autism is not the horrible disability that we are hearing about in the news. I'm the mother of two very different students who have autism. I have a son who is very, very high-functioning, thinks in math, is going to college, and I have a goddaughter who doesn't do math very well at all and is still looking for a job and lives at home and does not have very much training. We need better ways of recognizing and understanding this population of students so that we can provide for them what they need. I have seen so many school systems misdiagnose or not accept an independent diagnosis because they don't realize autism is a spectrum and not a one-size-fits-all. So how do we fix this? We need better-trained individuals, which means colleges have to start upping their game and recognizing that students with autism is a spectrum. We need for them to help recognize what services are needed and that there are more services, such as speech and language, OT, job training, that these students need and are not getting. If we want to change the future outlook for this population of students, we need to start now and get these populations diagnosed properly, recognize that this is a spectrum, not the low end of a so-called horrible disability. It is a gift. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Last, we have Dr. Jean Painter from MC Gate, Student Essay Contest. Welcome. Good morning.
Well, good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to share with you some exciting news about Maryland's diverse gifted and talented students, and it's the results of the Maryland Coalition for Gifted and Talented Education McGate essay contest on the topic, What Gifted Education Opportunities Have Meant to Me? And prizes have been awarded to 12 elementary, middle, and high school students in six different school systems, and you have a list of all the winners and participants in the press release you received. The contest winners and all the participants will be honored virtually tomorrow, April 30th, from 6:30 to 7:45 p.m. at our Celebrate Student Voices event, and you're all invited. In addition to hearing from our winners, the event features special guest, Dr. Anthony Vargas, Maryland State Department of Education, and I will be presenting a workshop for students called Jump Start Your Talent with the Aptitudes of Innovators. So this event is open. Just go to mdgifted.org and register today. You can get in, all of you listening. I'd like to conclude by reading three excerpts from these amazing winners in elementary, middle, and high school essays. The first-place elementary winner, Lance Leek, from Capitol Heights Elementary in Prince George's County, writes, "I know that education helps my dreams take flight. Gifted and talented education is especially important for me as a black boy because it gave me access to more challenging assignments that kept my mind engaged. I want to set a good example for other kids, showing them what it means to work hard, be kind, and always strive to do their best." And here's an excerpt from first-place middle school winner, Sharah Chon, from Clarksville Middle School in Howard County. He writes, "Gifted and talented education has largely influenced the kind of person I am today and the kind of person I will become in the future. These opportunities allow advanced students to work with other students who share the same interests. We need these programs because they are fundamental to educating the next generation not as sponges for facts, but as leaders, thinkers, and role models." And finally, honorable mention Kayla Parker from C Milton Wright in Hartford County, writes, "Midway through kindergarten, I was accelerated into first grade. This helped me connect with peers who were closer to my emotional and intellectual maturity. Without being accelerated or having enrichment, school would have no longer been interesting for me. Not being challenged, could have maybe be one of the kids who slipped through the cracks." So please come and hear more of these student voices and celebrate them with us tomorrow. Go to mdgifted.org, and thank you for your support of gifted and talented education.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you joining us and for showcasing students from across Maryland. We appreciate your leadership. With that, we will transition to our consent agenda. We have several items: meeting minutes, personnel action, budget adjustments, and a schedule waiver request. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. McCusker, second. Mr. Chesterfield. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Dr. Wright, State Superintendent's Update.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. It's been a busy month, needless to say. The first thing I'm going to talk about is I was invited to the Emerson Collective All Staff Meeting downtown, and they asked me to talk about our work here in Maryland around literacy and math, what we were doing about our reform work. Arnie Duncan, who's the former Secretary of Education, was the one that was co-leading, I guess, this conversation. He is also one of the managing partners at the Emerson Collective. This is a group that was founded by Lorraine Powell Jobs to remove barriers to opportunity, and education is one of their focus areas. So it was about a group of, I'm going to say, 250 people that were there from around the United States. We also attended — CCSO sponsored a math summit at their annual legislative conference. It focused on their report. If you've not read that report, it's a pretty powerful report of what they've done with mathematics and the keys to developing a strong math policy. The report was called A Nation of Problem Solvers: How State Leaders Can Help Every Student Achieve in Math, and Maryland was recognized as only one of three states in the nation that has a comprehensive math policy. Earlier this month, we also had our second session of the Maryland School Leadership Academy that we do in partnership with AIB and K-12 Coalition. We focus on systems thinking, leadership development, maximizing instructional time. What does that master calendar look like? What does the master schedule look like? Streamlining scheduling overall, and then fostering collaboration among school teams. We also talked about the role of teacher leadership and teacher leadership in retaining our teachers. We — I was asked to be on a panel for the Center for Assessment. They held a webinar on the case for statewide testing, and the reason that they did this was because there's been a lot of discussion in the media around what if the federal government decides to back away from statewide testing, and so they wanted to know exactly what everybody thought about that. And I was very clear that I feel very strongly that statewide testing serves a purpose, and it gives us a pulse on what is happening around our state. It also informs professional learning opportunities that we may need to be providing for our schools, and also identifying schools that certainly need some coaching support. And I think this is a way for us to also show our lawmakers a return on investment. They invest in education, so part of what we need to show them back are what results are we getting based on that investment. The Senate and the House recognized Maryland's Teachers of the Year at the State House earlier. There was resolutions that came out of both chambers. And Maryland Teacher of the Year, Catlock Jones, delivered remarks on the Senate floor. And this annual recognition, I think, just speaks volumes about our legislature recognizing the outstanding teachers that we have here in our state. The Governor's Monthly Children's Cabinet met. We had a huge discussion on the implementation of the ENOUGH Act and also a discussion around priorities that we needed to attend to. MSD is the lead partner in cradle-to-career education initiatives, which includes community schools, which includes our Saga, high-dosage tutoring. We also talked about teacher recruitment and retention. We talked about the Feds-to-Ed Initiative, which you're going to hear more about today. This month, we also held an all-staff town hall meeting right here in MSD. It was very well-attended. We talked about the accomplishments over the past year, advancing key policy areas in literacy, math, and college and career. We also provided updates on the Blueprint, Department of Ed's actions around ESTER funding and the Title VI certification, and our upcoming work. And we have a lot of upcoming work. So just to give you an overview, we are finalizing the strategic plan refresh. That's going to be coming to you after we take a look at some outcomes and strategies around that. Developing an adolescent literacy policy, that's underway. Implementing a new statewide assessment, that RFP is being finalized, and we should have the vendor, I believe, in June or early July. Launching the updated kindergarten readiness assessment, that's coming in fall. Revising the accountability model, that process is getting ready to get started. And updating the childcare scholarship program. So lots going on here at MSD. Held our first virtual meeting of the Maryland Family Advisory Council. We discussed the leadership roles of the council members and really kind of asked them to be our champions and our voices in the community. So as they come and meet with us at the department, what's their job in leaving, rather than just coming and getting the information, sharing that information with their constituents? We provided updates around the pre-K, grade 12 math policy, the federal issues that were going through, Feds-to-Ed campaigns, special education family support services, and also about our special and also about our Special Education Work Group. We have had several meetings, our monthly meeting, obviously, with BZAM, and our meeting with the Assistant Superintendents and the Chief Academic Officers. Lots of updates that we provided them. And both groups, both BZAM and the CAO's, got the same kind of updates around what's what we're doing, our math policy, our literacy policy, things that we're talking about, information around licensure, information around state and federal policy, updates, leadership training, et cetera. So we also reviewed with them the Assessment and Accountability Task Force recommendations. And that's what is guiding the work of the accountability team that is working on that now. We have been attending the performance cabinets. The governor has performance cabinets around very key issues that are of import to him. Obviously, education is one. And so we just had our most recent education performance cabinet around state plan priority two, setting Maryland students up for success. We are on schedule with all of our actions, and we're just focusing on, right now, high dosage tutoring and science of reading. We also provided an in-depth analysis of chronic absenteeism to that committee by student subgroups, districts, and school levels. There is one tomorrow. It's his very first one focused on young men and boys. And so we'll provide you an update after that performance cabinet as well, so you will know exactly what is happening across the state. Last week, I participated in a Women Leading Ed Talk. It's the 2025 Women Leading Education Summit in North Carolina. And it was followed by a Q&amp;A session. I really was kind of presenting more of my story and pivotal career decisions that I made, leadership principles that I live by, and about what my progression of my career has been like. And that was really, the people that were in the audience were some sitting superintendents, but a lot of them were aspiring to be in leadership roles. So it really was a way for them to figure out, there's not just one pathway. I use the analogy Cheryl, oh, shoot, her last name just pucks out of my head. "Leaning In," that's the book. So Cheryl. Thank you. I knew it was right on the tip of my tongue. Thank you, Samber. And she likened leadership to, your pathway to a jungle gym. And she said, "If you think about it, there's more than one way to get to the top of a jungle gym versus a ladder." Because with a ladder, there's only one way up and one way down. And if you think of a jungle gym, sometimes you may have to go around it and up a little bit, maybe down a little bit, before you finally get to the top or where you want to be. And I thought that image has always kind of stuck with me, thinking, because a lot of people come into these careers thinking there's just one way to get there. And actually, there's more than one way to get there. We held a great meeting yesterday with the extended leadership team here at the department. Over 70 people met in this room, actually, yesterday. We talked about our key priorities, organizational expectations. And we're trying to consolidate the number of reports that we are asking from LEAs so that we can get, lift that off their time, give them that time back to focus on keeping the main thing the main thing. We also talked about ownership of the blueprint implementation. Now that AIB and the board have really defined who owns what, so what does that mean to us to now own blueprint implementation? Leadership development, and we're going to be doing another leadership update with them. And also starting to work on the strategic plan update. And meaning, now that we've got the outcomes kind of established, what are those strategies that are going to be used across the agency in order for us to meet our results? And finally, I want to congratulate Dr. Mark Bedell, who is the Superintendent of Anaronda County. He was awarded the 2025 National School Public Relations Association Bob Grossman Leadership and School Communication. This is given annually to a practicing superintendent or education agency or service center in recognition of outstanding leadership and school public relations. From the moment he took the helm of Anaronda County in 2022, Dr. Bedell has made a promise to lead with transparency and authentic engagement. Nearly three years later, his commitment to open, honest communication, and has helped his community to build trust, elevate the voice of stakeholders, and position communications as a central driver of his district's success. Dr. Bedell's award is one of the top three leadership award that NSPR gives annually. And we are incredibly proud to have him leading one of our districts. And that circa concludes my update.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wright. There's a lot going on. Any follow-up questions from board members on topics raised? I'm very interested to hear how the performance cabinet for young men and boys goes. And I think it's a reminder for us, as we're thinking about our data, that that's something we should be looking at as well. How are young men doing and young women? And across something we might want to reintroduce into our practice.
Yeah, thank you for that, Dr. Mark. Because the other thing that we're going to be doing is not just looking at just young men and boys, but also breaking all of these data points out by race. Because I think when you're looking at discipline data, when you're looking at special education identification, when you're looking at chronic absenteeism, when you're looking at graduation. I mean, I think the governor's charge has been to look writ large. And then not just look at the data, but then the now what? What are we going to do about what the data says is actually happening in Maryland? So we will definitely keep you apprised of that.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we will go ahead and proceed. We're running a little bit ahead of schedule. But I think, Zach, are we ready to? Okay. All right, then we're going to go ahead to our stakeholder engagement session for the Month of the Young Child. And I'll turn it to Dr. Wright if you have any introductory comments, and then I'll go ahead and introduce the panels.
Yes, I want to bring up Sarah Neville Morgan, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Early Childhood, Jenna Smith, and Tara Phillips, if they could come up to the table. And they're going to provide you some updates around Pillar One. And then following that, those updates, the panels will be coming up. Thank you.
So thank you, board members, as everyone comes up, for giving us this platform.
Thank you. You would think I would know this after years of presenting in front of a board, but no. Thank you, board members, for really giving us this platform to showcase our blueprint-driven progress and for celebrating the Month of the Young Children. This really is a timely reminder that our collective leadership today shapes Maryland's youngest learners for a lifetime of success. And it's our opportunity to bring those littlest learners into the room. So if you look around, you'll see some of them. The science is clear. Learning begets learning, and starting early pays off with the greatest returns on investment. A heartfelt thanks for all of our art today that is provided to us from the Lofton Love Christian Daycare, from the Stonewall Daycare Center, St. Philip Nearie Preschool, and from family childcare provider Tamara Woods. They were able to brighten our room today by bringing the children's artwork in. We have a blueprint-aligned, future-focused vision. Every initiative that we'll be highlighting this morning, from our mixed delivery expansion to Maryland's Excel's quality gains and the growth of the childcare scholarship program, all of these advance Pillar One of the blueprint for Maryland's future, fulfilling its call for an accessible, high-quality birth-to-grade-12 system. By anchoring our work in the blueprint's rigorous milestones and formulas, we ensure each innovation is not a standalone project, but a coordinated, integrated step toward the law's promise of excellence and long-term economic vitality for all of Maryland's children and our communities. Even during the challenging budget times, we had record-setting investments. The State Board and our State Superintendent have championed historic multi-year budget increases that now top three-quarters of a billion dollars annually for early childhood, securing stable, long-term funding rather than one-time infusions. Maryland has nation-leading access reforms. In our childcare scholarship program, Maryland is one of the very first states to adopt presumptive eligibility for families and to offer advanced payments for childcare assistance, assuring that our families get help immediately and that our providers can count on steady cash flow. This is an innovation that is being studied by our peers nationwide. Actually, I have to say, we've had to reach out and say, "Could we coordinate the requests for technical assistance by other states?" Because we have so many states who are now asking us for how we have accomplished in Maryland what we have done. This success is also shown in how many children we now serve in our scholarship program. In 2023, we serve 24,000. We now are nearly at 45,000. It's staggering when you think of that increase so quickly. And for our providers who've been participating, in 2023, we had just over 2,800. And we now are over 3,600. That's a 77% increase in providers who are part of that scholarship program. Maryland Excel raises the bar. So we don't care just about access. We also care about the quality of the programs that our children are engaged in. More than 85% of licensed programs are now participating in Maryland Excel. And the share at our quality levels has doubled. So those fours and fives, which are the top tiers of the quality programs, are now there, proof that our tiered support model is driving healthier, safer, and more developmentally informed, learning-rich environments. We're also trailblazing new programs and models. From the outdoor, nature-based childcare pilot to the Push to Pre-K initiative, we are seeding cutting-edge approaches that other states are only beginning to explore, positioning Maryland as a national testbed for innovation. And we have partnership-powered results. None of this progress happens in a silo. You can't sit in that Ivy Tower. I'm on the 10th floor, so we call it the penthouse. If you've been up there, you'll know that's very far from a penthouse. Our continuous collaboration with the State Board, Dr. Wright, and our team here at MSDE, all of the local education agencies, our childcare providers, the childcare associations, and our families. All of this together becomes the engine propelling Maryland to national leader status. And more importantly, to improving our outcomes for our children. Dr. Wright has called all of our results-driven focus "the Maryland momentum." And we know that by having this happen, having it start in early childhood, we actually help propel that through all of education. So I'm now going to pass it over to my team. I also have to say that joining this team is really exciting for me. I don't know if you all know that Dr. Wright is actually looked at across this country as a leader in this area. So someone who I followed while I was in California, and I'm so glad to be part of here. And you see this also in our team within our early childhood. So Dr. Savage, over to you. It wouldn't be a presentation if we didn't have a few glitches.
Good morning. The number of pre-K grantees in FY '24, we had 53 in FY '25 this current grant year. We have 75 grantees, which is a 42% increase. And the number of participating family childcare programs in FY '24 was 44 family childcare homes. And in FY '25, the current grant year, there are 58 family childcare homes participating, which is a 32% increase. We're looking to increase participation in FY '26 as well. We've increased the number of technical assistance sessions and office hours for the FY '26 application process, including technical assistance sessions and office hours with Spanish translation services per the recommendations of our interest holders and partners. We've also increased the number of targeted technical assistance sessions for specific groups, including family childcare homes, faith-based programs, and Head Start programs. In FY '26, we moved to an online application submission based on feedback from our interest holders as well. We're excited to bring on new grantees for FY '26 and continue to increase the number of grantees participating in pre-K expansion in the future. Thank you. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Savage.
Good morning. So the Push to Pre-K Education and Outreach Campaign was launched in advance of the 2024-2025 school year in response to interest holders' requests, and it serves as a bridge. What it does is it offers support before and during the grant process to build capacity in grant writing and to reduce barriers to pre-K funding. Ultimately, the goal is empowering diverse private providers, such as family childcare homes, Head Start programs, and faith-based organizations to offer high-quality early learning. The first year, we provided coaching sessions to assist providers with understanding and meeting the eligibility grant, the expansion grant eligibility and application components. We also developed resources which are located on the pushtoprek.com website, such as eligibility and grant consideration checklists and steps for improving quality ratings. In this current school year, '25-'26 school year, we have facilitated audience-specific coaching sessions based on provider type for our family childcare homes, our Head Starts, our faith-based organizations, and for Spanish-speaking providers. For the upcoming school year, our '26-'27 school year, we are currently doing a survey analysis to determine the impact that our Push to Pre-K campaign has had on the number of providers awarded the expansion grant. In addition, we are also implementing a group chat session, which is a series of virtual small-group discussions that will be launched in order to address any misinformation within the childcare network. These are just a few of the items that we are putting in place in response to our interest holders' requests and recommendations so that we can continue to expand our pre-K expansion grantees. I'm now going to turn it over to my colleague Vanessa Jones.
Good morning. Good morning. The Judy Center Early Learning Hubs are strategically located within public schools to create accessible, community-based support systems. We emphasize multi-generational family engagement, recognizing that a child's success is deeply connected to family stability and involvement. For the 2023-2024 school year, Judy Center Early Learning Hubs provided essential services to 17,681 children and families across 86 sites statewide. This represents an 8.6% increase in just one year. We served 16,288 children in 2023 across 83 sites. This year, FY '25, we created a new technical assistance outreach program to local education agencies who were interested in bringing Judy Center Early Learning Hubs to their schools. We introduced specialized in-person support to help schools implement and optimize Judy Center programming. A specialist was assigned to each school to help with planning, to give information regarding the grant application process, as well as to review the Judy Center standards and the expectations of effectiveness. This has provided us with an opportunity to serve 14 schools throughout this year. And hopefully, all 14 will apply to become new Judy Center locations to expand in the FY '26 fiscal year. Patty Center Family Support Services, they specialize in supporting children and families during the critical birth through three years as well as prenatally. We know that 80% of brain development occurs during this time. Families need support to care for their children, to also understand the importance of child development during that critical time. But we also recognize that family members also need supports to become stable and self-sufficient. So Patty Centers provide workshops, coaching for parents and caregivers. They provide workforce development as well as English and second language classes. They also provide child and parent interaction time. And they are a central hub connecting families to essential services. The Division of Early Childhood, we partner with Maryland Family The Division of Early Childhood, we partner with Maryland Family Network to provide these services throughout the state. This service simplifies navigation of complex systems for young children and their families. Maryland Family Network currently operates 24 centers across the state. They have nearly doubled in, wait a minute, I'm sorry. The strategic expansion plan will nearly double the presence of Patty Centers by 2030. And this will exemplify our commitment to reaching more communities while maintaining program efficiency, effectiveness, and quality. We recognize that child development is an important link to family well-being. We recognize that resources for parents' mental health and self-care are important. We also recognize that building a strong support system among participating families not only increased family involvement, but it also increased the success of children from birth throughout life. Now I will pass it to my colleague Jenna Smith.
Thank you, Vanessa. The foundation of Pillar One is to increase the access for Maryland's youngest children and families to high-quality early care and education. Participation in Maryland excels, our state's quality rating and improvement system, continues to increase with 4,751 of our 6,670 licensed programs participating and more than 346 public pre-kindergarten programs, a 56% increase for our LEAs from last year. The blueprint has also supported increased financial incentives for our Maryland excels programs, providing bonuses to programs that publish first time, hire or maintain high-quality ratings. We have seen a 57% increase in the number of programs eligible for bonuses. And as of January 2025, we've awarded over $3 million to our Maryland excels participating programs. These dollars, which range from 1,000 to 13,500, have the ability to support increased quality within our early care and education programs through the purchase of material, curriculum, professional development for our staff. And we are very much amazed at our program's commitment to continuous quality improvement. And we look forward to being able to strengthen our programs and continue to provide increased access to our children and families in FY '26. And I'll now pass it over to my peer Tara Phillips.
Good morning, everyone. So as you can see on the screen, I am here to share just a little bit about childcare scholarship. As Sarah mentioned earlier, we are so excited that we have seen a 41%, excuse me, a 41% increase in the number of children served since 2003. We are really excited that we are able to now serve almost 45,000 children in the state of Maryland. And this is only done with the awesome participation of our childcare providers and educators who are dedicated to working with our children and families. I'm not going to read what's on the screen. I'm just going to let you take a look at it. And hopefully, that's right. If we, December 23 to March 24, we had 25,000 students, children, enrolled. And as of March of 2025, we had 32,137 children enrolled. So we are really excited to show that the Child Care Scholarship team is working hard, is committed to making sure that children, oh, the numbers are wrong. I am so sorry. That's right. So the numbers on the screen are wrong.
They're old.
That's right. So today, as of today, thank you. As of today, we have 44,562 children enrolled. Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't even realize that was a different number there. So we are happy to say that we are dedicated and working hard to make sure that we continue to partner with providers and educators in the state of Maryland. And next is our parent. We have a parent from our childcare scholarship program who will join us.
So as we bring up our families, there's a few accomplishments that I'll just wrap up. So first, as Essence comes up, we have trailblazing roles. So alongside Virginia, we are a pilot state for Military Care in Your Neighborhood Plus program. I think a lot of us here in Maryland have connections somehow to the military. A lot of us are wearing purple, or little bits of purple, whatever we could grab, to show that support. And happy that we not just do it with our schools, but we also do it with our childcare. We had 422 educators currently advancing through the Child Care Career and Professional Development Fund. We added 97 newly licensed programs, which expands our child seats to over 1,500, just another 1,500 seats for children. And we had an accelerated one-month true-up process that is putting our scholarship funds in provider hands faster than ever. So a lot of things that highlight how we are moving forward, in addition to the blueprint, we call this sort of like the expanded blueprint components that really move our system forward. All right, so we are really excited to have Essence here to share the parent part of participating in our system.
Thank you, Sarah. Good morning. My name is Essence Van Lendingcam, and I have the unique honor of serving in Division of Early Childhood, specifically in the Child Care Scholarship Branch. Today, I'm not just speaking as an MSDE employee, but also as a proud parent of a beautiful two-year-old daughter named Kanari, who is currently enrolled in the Child Care Scholarship Program. With the support I receive from the Child Care Scholarship Program, my child is able to attend an amazing early learning center, and I have a peace of mind knowing that she's in a safe nurturing environment. I'm sorry. While I'm here at MSDE doing the amazing work for our community. For me as a parent, it's a huge relief. The program lifts, oh, thank you. The program lifts an enormous burden off my shoulder mentally, financially, and emotionally. It also allows me to be present at work and at home. Being both a recipient of the scholarship program and someone who works in the program gives me a unique and powerful perspective. I not understand the process as an employee, but I live it as a parent. And I know firsthand how transformative this support can be. I also feel a deep sense of purpose, knowing that the work that I do every day is connected to something that helps me and my family personally and thousands of others across Maryland. The Child Care Scholarship Program makes a tremendous difference in families like mine today, and they feel it as well. I can say with high confidence, this program works. It works for me, and I know that with the continuous growth and success that we see in this program today, it works for our children and families also that we serve. And I say as a parent, thank you.
Thanks, Essence. So we have two more of our programs before I hand it back over to our chair. So Hillary Roberts King, our Downtown Baltimore Child Care.
Good morning. My name is Hillary Roberts King, and I'm the Executive Director of Downtown Baltimore Child Care, better known as DBCC, right around the corner here. DBCC is a nonprofit that has been providing the highest-quality childcare in Baltimore for over 40 years. And currently, we are a Blueprint Pre-K Provider. The true potential of mixed-delivery pre-K funding is that families have the ability to choose a setting that meets the needs of their family. And we, as a state, get the benefit of more families served and more children in quality settings benefits us all. DBCC operates three centers, and we have 20 pre-K-funded enrollments. This year, we served families in our mixed-delivery pre-K who qualified due to their family's income, their family's home language, or the child's disability. Your role here is to analyze all the quantitative data that we just saw. But I am here to provide the qualitative insight into how blueprint dollars contribute to a family's stability in our programs and therefore, support kindergarten readiness. Some families have chosen our program because they wanted a 12-month program. We're not a 10-month school year. We're open all the time. We're truly open all the time. Some have chosen to keep their three- and four-year-olds in our center for pre-K because the parent is very close, because the center is very close to the parent's workplace. Mom leaves her job, walks to the center, they go home together. No juggling a second shift of caregivers for the child. One family in our program moved to Baltimore just as they received a diagnosis of their child's disability. They did not have to find a new placement. New services, same setting, and it worked for them. I know more than one family who is grateful to continue working with the same group of people at our centers who know how to support them as they use Child Care Scholarship from the state or their employers to pay for the critical care that comes before or after the funded pre-K day. Of critical importance is how mixed-delivery can help families who no longer qualify for early Head Start services that they were receiving because the program worked. Early Head Start worked, but they no longer qualify for the services. Now we can transition that family to public pre-K funding. They can stay in a stable setting with their child and still get the high-quality educational program. I know families who are grateful to keep their child in continuous care in our center because the family's new baby is also enrolled at our center. One drop-off, one pickup. If any of you are parents, you know that contributes to family stability. These glimpses are all anecdotal for certain, but they illustrate how families can benefit from the choice of mixed-delivery. Now, with no question, mixed-delivery is complicated for providers like DBCC. It's complicated to administer the grant and to meet the demands of our regulators, accreditators, pre-K system. And there is more important work to be done to streamline that process. So I ask this group to continue to work hard at the complicated details because the dividends of mixed-delivery for families are worth it. Stable families grow strong, healthy children. Mixed-delivery pre-K is part of that solution for Maryland families. Thank you.
All right, one more program to bring up. Emile Sabour from Union Baptist Harvey Johnson Head Start.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, everybody. All right, I'm Emile Sabour. I'm the Director at Union Baptist Harvey Johnson Head Start. It's the first Head Start in Baltimore City. When Lyndon B. Johnson took the charge to create a war on poverty, Head Start was one of his babies to begin that process in Baltimore City in 1965. Union Baptist Head Starts said, "We'll go ahead and give this a try." 60 years later, it's still here.
Mr. Sabour, I think we have one of your alumni staff members on our board.
Oh, Mrs. Johnson, so I better not mess this up. Yes, indeed. That work took charge with Reverend Dobson at the time. He had what was called the Goon Squad, in which that was a collaboration of different pastors, community leaders, and organizations. And they helped to build up individuals in the community to become legislators and major stakeholders in West Baltimore. And with that charge and that work, they were able to create Union Baptist Harvey Johnson Head Start and start that work in early childhood education. So for 60 years, they have been doing that work, and we continue to do that work now. So there are three key points we're going to talk about, which is family engagement and support, hands-on, purposeful, and intentional experiences and collaboration, which is key. So when we talk about family engagement and support with Head Start, we know that the child's parents are their first teachers, and we try to instill this in each and every individual that's enrolled into our program. When we talk about engagement, we're not just not talking about the parents participating in a workshop or an activity, but full hands-on experiences inside of the classrooms and throughout the building of the program through volunteer opportunities, leadership opportunities by being a part of our community, parent policy community, Board, Parent Policy Board, and Parent Policy Council, which are two different boards of government that help to govern the Head Start programs. The parents are the voices and the guide. So we use their interest and their information to help make sure we're meeting the needs of each and every parent and child throughout the process. Partnerships through home visits, connecting families with resources like housing, healthcare, employment opportunities, and other resources to make sure that they're getting their needs met so that they can be well on their way to build a strong household within their family. And then building that strong household can then in turn build strong communities. It's a lot of work and an effort to work with different generations throughout the years in Head Start. We talk about supporting child development. The children that are ages three to five, as they transition from early childcare settings, Judy Centers, and other daycare and childcare providers, we learn, we know that children learn best through play. And children take their play very, very seriously. So we have to make sure that when we build these opportunities for education in that playful environment, that we're intentional in the activities so that the hands-on activities that they're doing are building their strong language and literacy skills, math and science, finding gross motor skills, because we know that children learn best through doing things. You just can't have them sitting around in a circle unless they're really engaged. And you have a strong teacher that can keep them engaged in that opportunity. But they'll let you know, it's time to move on. So they have different areas that we intentionally design in the environment that spark the children's curiosity, which are crucial to their thinking and their problem-solving, and then build on those rich sensory skills. And they also build a strong, excuse me, they also build strong foundations for their independence and their resilience through the role play. Different areas that they have that they work on are through building with blocks, exploring nature, creating art, and participating in the dramatic play area. And if you were ever in an early childcare setting, you know that the dramatic play area is where you learn everything about the child and the family. They'll let you know everything. All you got to do is sit back and listen and watch. And then through that opportunity and that role play, the children build those strong social skills, which are the foundation for early childhood education. We know that children are going to get their ABCs and their one, two, threes, and their what's taller and what's big. But if they don't learn those strong social, emotional skills, they won't thrive into the next phase of their educational and development. So that's a key area that we want to really build on. And the last part is finally through collaboration, which is key, through positive outcomes. As someone said before, we cannot work in silos. We cannot do this work alone. With the 60 years of this program that has been thriving in Baltimore City, I've learned that they've had so many community organizations that they still work with. The University of Maryland has been, the University of Maryland School of Nursing has been a strong component of the collaboration with this program for over 25-plus years, providing health services to children. And they hit the children from the top of their head to the bottom of their feet. So they provide physicals, screenings, they provide individual information for the children, do intentional workshops inside of the classroom. I remember one time I was at Walmart shopping, and a child was picking something up off the floor. And she said, "Hey, Mom, we got to go wash our hands." And she started singing this hand-washing song. And I was like, this song sounds real familiar. And I turned around, and it was one of our kids. So she said, "Let's go to the bathroom so we can wash our hands," singing the same song that the nursing students taught them about how to keep their hands clean and why it was so important. So to know that these things are being learned and passed on, and the children are actually using them in their real-world life experiences are really key and important. So I got off on track here. But other community partners are through the libraries, which is a Books for Me campaign, which helps the parent build skills to help their children learn early literacy skills. And that's again, a hands-on, intentional activity that they do inside of the classroom and also with the parents on a one-on-one basis. So a lot of activities that we do, we want to make sure that the parents are getting those skills firsthand on-site, and then we bring the children up so that parents can be engaged with their children at the same time and take those skills home. And in closing, I just want to say by engaging families, collaborating across different systems and providing intentional and meaningful learning experiences, we can ensure that Baltimore's youngest learners, I'm sorry, the real Baltimore came out of me. Baltimore's youngest learners have the opportunity to, that they deserve, to grow, thrive, and learn. Thank you.
So now that we've heard from parents and actually program providers who are offering these services, I'm going to hand it back over to you, Dr. Michael, for some of our external interest holders and partners.
Great. All right. Thank you so much for that opening presentation. Now excited for us to bring our first panel of stakeholders. As we discussed, this work is only done in partnership, and our partners in the field are critical in helping us getting the work done and holding us accountable, we'll talk about that a little bit later, to ensuring that we are serving children and families. In our first panel, we have, I believe, Stephanie Schaefer, Program Coordinator with the Maryland Association for the Education of Young Children, or NACY affiliate. We also believe Ms. Schaefer is here virtually. And then we have Chris Push, President of the Maryland State Child Care Association, who I think I saw in the room. Is that right? Come on up. Come on up. We also have Annabelle Rodas, President of Latino Child Care Association of Maryland. Welcome. And Carrie Hyde, Executive Director of Ready at Five, who's going to be joining our first panel. All right. Zach, is there a presentation that we need to be mindful of? Okay, great. All right, looks like we've got Ms. Schaefer up first.
Hello, thank you.
Hold on one second.
Sure.
Can we lay over the, her video over the presentation? We can only see your presentation, not you, so just give us one second, Ms. Schaefer. Can we go any bigger, or is that it? Nope. Oh, that'll work. Perfect. Maybe put it on the other side of the screen would be best. Yep, perfect. All right, Ms. Schaefer, welcome. Please.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm very pleased to be here today representing the Maryland Association for the Education of Young Children. We are a membership organization of early childhood educators across all sectors. We have about seventeen hundred members in Maryland, and we're very pleased to talk to you today about the work that we're doing and how that aligns with the work in our state. So as it says here, our mission statement, "All young children thrive and learn in a society dedicated to ensuring that they reach their full potential." So that is really what we're about, and we're looking at all young children. And we look at early childhood education really as birth through age eight, which is what the science of child development says is early childhood education and how young children learn and grow. So despite the way our sectors are structured, in terms of long-term, we look at early childhood education that way. So we serve early childhood educators in all settings, in childcare centers, in family childcare homes, and as well as in public education settings from pre-K through third grade. Next slide, please. And this is our vision. We believe that early childhood educators are essential to Maryland's future success. At Maryland AUIC, we envision a society where all young children thrive and learn in a supportive, high-quality environment. Our mission is to promote high-quality early learning for all children from birth through age eight by connecting practice, policy, and research. We advance a diverse, dynamic, early childhood education profession and support all who care for, educate, and advocate for young children. Next slide, please. And Maryland AUIC's work is fully aligned with the goals of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. We are expanding access to quality early learning through our commitment to developmentally appropriate practice, public policy, and advocacy efforts. Now, developmentally appropriate practice, that basically means sort of an early childhood term of art, means teaching practice that's grounded in the development of young children, how they learn and grow. So we certainly want educational approaches that work with how children, young children, learn and grow best. So that is best practices in our field. We strengthen educator preparation and support through the unifying framework and the work of the Commission on Professional Excellence in Early Childhood Education. Now, these initiatives are national efforts that really create the vision for early childhood education as a true profession, like the way nurses, accountants, or lawyers are a true profession. And these initiatives really outline the steps along the way on how we elevate early childhood education to be a true profession with that kind of compensation and that kind of professional recognition. And these are initiatives that link Maryland to national innovation and leadership. Also, we are building birth, seamless birth through grade, third-grade systems by promoting pre-K through third-grade alignment and using human-centered design strategies to improve continuity for all children and families. We're proud to be part of national initiatives that center this educational alignment from birth through third grade. We have done work with the National P3 Center, and we've been part of a learning community with the Federal Department of Early Education's kindergarten as a sturdy bridge. Next slide, please. Okay. Here's some key initiatives that we are undertaking during 2025. First, we are holding screenings of a documentary, Make a Circle, that will help increase public awareness about the importance of early childhood education and necessary supports that educators need in order to do their job and to stay in the profession. Second, our play conference will promote the power of play as a foundation for learning and development. Third, our professional development offerings will continue to grow a high-quality, equity-focused workforce. And finally, our ongoing advocacy and community-building work ensures that educators' voices are at the center of system reforms because we believe firmly, nothing about us without us. Early educators really need to be at the table and helping to define our systems and contribute to policy developments in this field. Next slide, please. Together, we have the opportunity to build a strong, seamless early learning system. Together, we can elevate and unify the early childhood profession. Together, we must champion equity and excellence for every child in Maryland. We invite you to partner with Maryland AUIC as we shape Maryland's future by investing in its youngest learners and educators who nurture them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Chris Push from the Maryland State Childcare Association. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you so much. Good morning, esteemed State Board of Education members, and a warm welcome to Maryland's, to the new Assistant State Superintendent of the Division of Early Childhood, Sarah Neville Morgan. I come bearing gifts. So you came just in time for Maryland cuisine to have your Eastern Shore corn and our steamed crabs, and I brought a mallet for you. And you can look at all twenty-four jurisdictions, and I brought one for you, Superintendent, because last time I was here, I didn't get a chance to bear my gifts. Welcome to Maryland. My name is Chris Push. I am the Executive Director of the Maryland State Childcare Association, co-chair of the Office of Childcare Advisory Council, State Early Child Advisory Council Member. I serve on many councils, commissions, work groups across the state, representing childcare on behalf of MSCCA, as we like to be called. So I'm going to talk a little bit about who we are. MSCCA is a nonprofit celebrating our forty-first year in business as a professional organization, serving over five thousand members with a mission to support the advancement of professional licensed learning programs in Maryland. We are a state affiliate of the National Childcare Association and the National Early Childhood Program Accreditation, or NECPA. It is my honor to be invited to celebrate the month of the young child and share great work happening in our state. MSCCA celebrates children every day, as our trademark tagline is, "Caring for Maryland's most important natural resource, which is our children." Why do we do what we do? Is because we understand quality childcare directly impacts a child's development and sets the foundation for future success in school and life. We recognize here today and every day the critical importance of the early years, that learning begins at birth, and ninety percent of the brain development occurs before the age of five. In order to ensure success in kindergarten and beyond, we must recognize our youngest citizens do not learn best by racing to the top, but through developmentally appropriate practices that support social and emotional foundations, trust and relationship building, and learning through child-centered inquiry-play-based curriculum. MSCCA fits into the early childhood ecosystem as a professional organization focusing on the advancement for the field and advocacy on their behalf. We engage our community through advocacy alerts and events, newsletters, and active social media presence with over thirty-four hundred followers. MSCCA develops a priorities agenda that is our North Star in order to achieve goals and elevate voices. You have a copy of MSCCA's priorities agenda, our organization's North Star, which focuses on four priorities, including equity in mixed delivery of public pre-K, workforce compensation and development, and direct investments for children, families, and the childcare community. All of our work aligns with these priorities. Additionally, we try to align whenever possible with the state's CCDF plan, the AIB recommendations related to Pillar One, and always best practices for children, families, and the childcare community. I will highlight a little of the great work happening in Maryland this morning, and some examples include our MSCCA's partnerships with generous philanthropic funders to support grant writing, grant management, and capacity building for private childcare programs to participate in public pre-K in the mixed delivery system. MSCCA supported nine childcare programs across two regions in Montgomery County and Baltimore City, and successfully added one hundred and fifty-nine seats for mixed delivery of public pre-K in community-based settings. This work is critical as childcare is not sustainable without three- and four-year-olds, and the workforce has greater opportunities for increased compensation through equitable participation. More partnerships, including celebrating early childhood in collaboration with Kaplan Early Learning Company to raffle off classroom materials each day to our members during the week of the young child. We believe in quality and offer a ten percent membership discount to programs published in Maryland excels, and we will train over one thousand early childhood providers this year at our two statewide conferences that are approved by MSD. MSCCA has awarded close to ten thousand dollars to members who applied to our Passion for Excellence Grant in 2025. Due to razor-type budgets in childcare, with this grant, we help support eight early learning programs by paying directly for new classroom chairs, new Inspire curriculum, sensory panels, bubble tubes, and much more. MSCCA leads the way in advocacy as a state organization, and my slides, which I'm not going to go through them all, include our recent successes during legislative session to support early childhood, children, and families. And finally, childcare is an economic and equity imperative. Childcare is the workforce behind the workforce, and childcare is early childhood education. MSCCA will focus on building a stronger, more sustainable early childhood ecosystem as childcare is declining in Maryland. The Childcare Scholarship Program is pausing on May first, leaving new families needing childcare on wait lists. Childcare is more expensive than in-state college tuition in Maryland, and childcare is struggling to recruit and retain a qualified workforce. We have work to do, and we hope the State Board of Education will continue to engage with early childhood stakeholders and state organizations as partners today and in the future. Thank you all for your leadership and service to this state, to the children of Maryland from birth to high school graduation and beyond.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Rodas, President, Latino Child Care Association of Maryland. Welcome.
Buenos dias, buenos dias. Can you hear me? The button, there you go. That part nobody talking about. Buenos dias, buenos dias. My name is Annabelle Rodas. I'm the President of the Latino Child Care Association, and I've been an early childhood educator for over twenty-three years. Happily, excited every day. The Latino Child Care Association is, promotes a early childhood education through the professional development of our Latino childcare educators. LaCAM, as we call it in Spanish, we shorten it, we say LaCAM, Latino Child Care Association of Maryland, is a statewide nonprofit advocating and supporting Latino childcare educators in Maryland. We believe every child deserves a strong start, and we work to eliminate barriers faced by Latino educators. Our why is to uplift Latino voices and ensure our children are ready to succeed from day one in kindergarten and beyond. We started as sixty ladies, and now we are over four hundred members. Every day, very busy, very passionate about what we do every day. If you can help me with the, I guess the, I can just read it from here. I'm done with that one. We are, LaCAM, or Latino Child Care Association of Maryland, works closely in it with partners to ensure that their efforts are complementary, avoiding duplication and leveraging each partner's strengths. For example, we work with MACHEL, it's an organization that gives us English lessons. We believe there are educators, even though we do Spanish immersion sometimes, or bilingual, they need to learn English. So we do this every year, and it's English for early education workers. LaCAM also collaborates with the Council for Professional Recognition, and there we work with our educators to get their CDA, their Child Development Associate, and now LaCAM is an agency so that we can observe and make it more available, the observations, so that more Latinos get their CDA every day. LaCAM has recently signed an agreement with Children's Opportunity Alliance to provide nine family childcare educators in Montgomery County only with highly-quality classroom materials aligned with the pre-K expansion program, along with mentoring how to use these resources effectively. So we're there for the pre-K expansion too, and we want to be counted. Let me see, is the next one? Sorry, I got out of place. What Maryland needs and where LaCAM needs expand. We expand access to multicultural professional development and licensing support. We elevate family childcare quality by embedding research-based tools like FINE PD into daily practices. We build early literacy readiness through culturally relevant materials and CDA-level training. Bridge systematic gaps by ensuring Latino family childcare educators have a seat at every policy table. First time we collaborated with, in the month of the young child, with sixteen other organizations. This doesn't mean that we did not celebrate every year, we did it anyway, but this time we would include it in all the program. Policy governments update LaCAM bylaws. This year, after ten years, we have updated our bylaws because we have grown to the point where things needed to change. We change every day, we need to do that too. The success of the blueprint depends on reaching every provider and every child. LaCAM is your trusted bridge to Latino childcare community. We're here, we're staying, we're working. Together for Maryland Children, when we invest in educators, we invest in children's futures. LaCAM is ready to scale impact through collaboration. We bring trusted relationships, cultural responsiveness, and hands-on support. Let's ensure all children are ready for kindergarten, starting with strong, supportive educator, ready for pre-K, ready for life, is what we believe. And learning doesn't start in kindergarten. Learning starts, as she said, in the womb, and as educators from home, we also provide this education. We're not babysitters, we're early childhood educators. And just as the teachers in public school, we do planning, we do everything that they do, and we align with it. So we want to be counted for the pre-K expansion. We have, I think I'm done with it. My papers got a little bit out of place, sorry about that. Mil disculpas. Some of our partners are Montgomery College for Classes, the Council for Professional Recognition, Maryland Excel. We work with Maryland Excel every day. We bother them every day because we want our educators to do high quality. We do not want to be considered babysitters, we are not babysitters, and we are right there with everybody else. Children Opportunities, great partners, Montgomery County in DHHS, Maryland State Department, same thing. Thank you to MSD for listening to us and helping us every day in getting ahead. PEP is a program for educating parents because sometimes from home we pay attention to the children's education, but we also have to help the parents. Some parents come to us and say, "I don't know what to do with my child." So here is PEP. We guide them to go and get support because if you have young children, you know you need a village. And with that, thank you very much. Muchas gracias por escucharme. Thank you for inviting us, and I want, I'm a Latina, so I can-
Thank you. Next, I'm pleased to introduce Carrie Hyde, Executive Director of Ready at Five.
Hi, everyone. I was born and raised in Maryland, and yet I am still somehow allergic to the state, so I apologize for my little fry here on my voice. But thank you so much for the opportunity to share a bit about the work we do at Ready at Five. I'd like to start by wishing everyone a most belated Happy Month of the Young Child, Ready at Five, and over a dozen partners across the state. We celebrated by offering special events for children, family, caregivers, to highlight the importance of early, high-quality learning opportunities across the spectrum, in the arts, in play, in music, in all of the different areas that are so important that we know for early childhood education. Ready at Five kicked off the month with our Spring School Readiness Symposium on April 1st, co-sponsored by Mile and the University of Maryland Center for Early Childhood Education and Intervention, the day focused on evidence-based approaches to literacy for early childhood settings. Ready at Five's first school readiness symposium was held in 2001. Doesn't come close to the Head Start Center, but I think that's pretty impressive. And the first iteration of our Readiness Matters publication was released in 2006. Throughout our history, Ready at Five has based its work on research and best practices in the field of early childhood education. Our work complements, supports, and advances the work of local communities, programs, educators, and the Maryland State Department of Education. Our vision is that all Maryland children have the foundational skills they need to be successful. But this requires that all early care and education professionals have the skills that they need to deliver high-quality learning experiences to the children in their settings, whatever that setting might be. In one example, in support of the state's prioritization of early literacy, Ready at Five created a three-part series, Introduction to the Science of Reading. And of course, we offered the series this month as part of our recognition of the month of the young child. This virtual series is designed for educators in all early care settings, and we've welcomed childcare providers, library staff, Judy Center staff and their partners, as well as pre-K teachers, to the sessions. In fact, the last two series, we've held sessions, we've held slots for Judy Center partners, so that their community partners can access professional development that they can also receive, so that their language, the words that they're using, the understanding is similar, so that they can have conversations and do planning across their county and have a more powerful impact. The feedback to these sessions has been overwhelmingly positive, and we look forward to expanding the reach of the series through partnerships across the state. I'm so proud to be part of the legacy that is Ready at Five. Our work with MSD has been longstanding and impactful, and I look forward to continuing that partnership as we move forward in supporting and amplifying the priorities of the pillar one of the blueprint, Dr. Wright and her team. Thank you again to the board for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you very much. Pleased to move to our second panel. First, we will have Ruby Daniels, joined virtually, who's the President of the Maryland State Family Childcare Association. Next, we have Rachel London, who is the Executive Director of the Maryland Developmental Disabilities Council. And finally, we have Laura Wheeldryer, Executive Director, and Mike Hirschenfeld, Chief Impact Officer for the Maryland Family Network. Welcome. All right. Let's get Ruby pinned.
Can you hear me?
One second. All right. Hi, Ruby, it's good to see you.
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me?
I can, we can, and welcome. You may begin whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you so much. I kind of messed up my PowerPoint, so we just have this screen. Good morning, my name's Ruby Daniels, and I'm the current President of the Maryland State Family Childcare Association. I'm a family childcare provider in Howard County, and also a second-year Family Childcare Independent Blueprint grantee. In addition, I have other jobs too, like the pillar one, chair to the pillar one advisory committee to the AIB. Today, I'm here to highlight the essential role of family childcare and who we are. I know a lot of you are not familiar with our setting. So, the family childcare is unique. We are a small, home-based setting that offers personalized nurturing care. Family childcare are not just caregivers. We are teachers, business owners, and often pillars of the community serving children from infancy to school age. Learning in family childcare is different. It happens in a natural home environment, and most of the time, it's in a mixed-age setting. So, what we offer, we offer education from birth, and the children experience continuity of care, often with siblings, and they build strong attachment. Family childcare also supports a pre-K expansion by offering flexible wraparound hours, and is workforce-friendly for parents, and reflects the language, the culture, and the values of the community it serves. So, for our organization, how we are connected with the family childcare is that we are founded in 1983, and we started the Superior Support Network, but we have evolved into statewide advocacy organization representing over 4,000 licensed family childcare providers across Maryland. We exist to uplift, support, and advocate for a profession which is rapidly declining. So, we want to put a stop to that, and we want to make sure that we are available for our future generation. We, MSFCCA is the backbone of family childcare providers across Maryland, ensuring that they have access to professional development, mentorship, resources, and a strong voice in policy conversation that shape early childhood education. For our priorities, looking ahead, we want to strengthen the provider participation, the pre-K expansion, ensuring family childcare providers are recognized as early educators, and advocating for policy solutions that are equitable and sustainable for small, home-based businesses. Creating also a system that will accommodate our unique setting and our unique operation. Like what I said earlier on, the learning that occurs in family childcare looks different than in a classroom environment. It's like we have a lot of outdoor education, it's in a home environment, it's very cozy, and the children makes the connection and does a lot of learning in our setting. So, what does family childcare need to thrive in the blueprint system? Family childcare providers need fair and accessible pathways to participate in pre-K. A lot of us have difficulty in terms of language to apply for the grant, and also would need some tweaking on the system in order to accommodate our unique operational, our unique setting and operation. So, we would, we would need technical assistance as well. A lot of us are not tech savvy. And policies that respect our unique business model, ensuring children benefit from consistent, high-quality care without unnecessary disruptions. So, what we need, what MSFCCA is doing right now to support the workforce, is we're bringing back our CANBE. It's a childcare advancement network, building educators, shortcut CANBE. We are preparing providers to elevate quality, obtain credentials, and fully participate in Maryland's mixed-delivery pre-K system, also working to increase the capacity too. We invest directly in workforce growth and professionalism, and through philanthropic dollars, we're able to very soon offer financial incentive for networking, coaching, and improving the quality of programs. Ultimately, our work is about the children and the families. Children thrive in nurturing, consistent environment. Families benefit from trusted, community-rooted caregivers. We are in the community, we're your neighbors, we are relatives. So, when we strengthen family childcare, we strengthen the entire early childhood system. We call on the State Board of Education to recognize family childcare as an integral part of the Maryland's early childhood system. We must ensure policies, funding, and supports and systems are designed to include and uplift family childcare and not to leave us behind. Thank you so much for your time, and appreciate being here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruby. We appreciate you joining us. Next, we have Rachel London, again from the Maryland Developmental Disabilities Council. Welcome.
Good morning, and thank you for the invitation. As Dr. Michael just said, I'm Rachel London, the Executive Director of the Maryland Developmental Disabilities Council. We are an independent unit of state government that creates change to make it possible for people with developmental disabilities to live the lives they want with the support they need. All of our work is grounded in our vision, that people with and without disabilities in Maryland live, learn, work, and play together. Apparently, I cannot talk in Chuka. Did I lose control? Okay. I'm just going to keep going. A little more about the council. We were created in Maryland in 1971 by executive order, following the federal law that guides our work. That's the Developmental Disabilities Act. We are 100% federally funded, yes, grinning with all the rest of you at the moment. And the council, or my Board of Directors, are the ones that really guide our work, and they are, we are led by people with developmental disabilities and their families. There are a variety of state agencies that are also members, including a representative from the Division of Early Intervention and Special Education here. We create change in a lot of ways, but most importantly, to this group and to all of you, our work is grounded in that we advise state leaders at all levels, so both in, at, excuse me, state agencies, and also state legislature, on issues that impact people with developmental disabilities of all ages, birth to death, and their families. We do our work in two big ways, a lot of policy. But we are also the only grant-making organization in Maryland solely for people with developmental disabilities. So, our just over $1.2 million budget, about half of it goes out in grants that help partner organizations, state agencies, nonprofits, a variety of groups, do the work needed to create even more change and improve even more lives. We also have a variety of publication resources I wanted you all to have on the slides, and we do all of this with our very small but mighty staff. There are four of us right now. We do have a vacancy that will stay vacant until we all know what's happening with federal funding. So, how do we do this? We are guided by a five-year state plan, or our strategic plan. And every five years, the council develops that plan that guides our work. It identifies barriers that get in the way of people with developmental disabilities living the lives they want with the support they need, and then the activities and objectives that we are going to take on to improve those things. So, we have three goals right now. Our current state plan is actually ending September of 2026. We are in the middle, or at the beginning-middle, of creating our next five-year state plan. And we have three goals currently, likely to stay with our next five-year plan, very big lofty goals, are that people with developmental disabilities are leaders and advocates, people with developmental disabilities and their families are empowered to live the lives they want with the support they need, and people with developmental disabilities and their families have access to their communities and services and supports, and they are treated with dignity and respect. And goal three is where we're going to, in one moment, talk about all of the work we're doing in early care and education. So, as I said, people with disabilities and their families lead the council's work, and all of our work is rooted in our vision. In order to make that vision happen, people need information and resources, and they need that information and resources in ways that are accessible to them. That includes plain language, it includes translating into other languages, and it includes providing in a variety of ways, right? To make sure that all of our work includes people with disabilities and that they can access that information, we really embed that priority in all of what we do. So, not just internally, but externally too. So, you will see, our grant-making is in plain language and requires people to include people with developmental disabilities and their families, for example. So, our goal three, we want to improve childcare and education practices so all children and youth with disabilities play and learn together, youth with and without disabilities, learn and play together with the services and supports they need. And again, you'll see here that we are really doing that in two ways, advocacy and grant-making. I love a lot of things about my job, but one of my favorite things is that we get to advocate for the hard things, the hard things that are needed to really create change, and then turn around and say, "We have some money to help support you to be able to create that change." And that's really important, and I'm very hopeful that will continue, but you know. So, our priorities for young children with disabilities. I want to recognize and appreciate the comments made by the Assistant Superintendent. We look forward to working with her. I also want to recognize the progress Maryland really has made for young children. We have. But we all have to also acknowledge that their work still needs to be done, especially for young children with disabilities and their families, so that they, all children, learn and play and grow together. So, I have three real big priorities. They're going to look very familiar, right? We want to increase access to high-quality, inclusive childcare by providing training, TA, and resources. Want to increase access to public pre-K for young children with disabilities, and we want to eliminate the achievement gaps and make sure all young children are ready for kindergarten. And in closing, I will just say, for those of you that have known me and our work for decades, I get asked a lot why we specifically talk about children with disabilities, and why, like my colleagues, I just don't say "all children." And I hope that there is a day that we can say "all children," but until "all children" really does mean "all children," we are going to be explicit. It is also my job to talk about children with developmental disabilities, but we are going to be explicit, and we are going to call out the needs of children with disabilities in all of the work. Thank you.
Next, we have Laura Wheeldryer and Mike Hirschenfeld from Maryland Family Network. Laura.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much.
I should say, welcome back to Laura, who is a former member of this board. So, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Laura Wheeldryer, Executive Director of Maryland Family Network, and I'm joined today by Mike Hirschenfeld, our Chief Impact Officer. I also want to recognize Beth Morrow, our Director of Public Policy in the audience. First, I want to say thank you to the State Board and to Dr. Wright. Thanks for having us here. We're very excited to talk to you this morning. We're also super excited to work with the new state superintendent, Assistant State Superintendent. MFN is so lucky to be a part of this group of incredible partners you've heard today, lots of overlapping work that you will hear themes of in our presentation as well as others, and we also are very fortunate to be a close partner to MSD. Our constituents are young children, ages zero to five, and the adults in their lives. Those adults might be parents, family members, early childhood educators, and care providers, and we focus on those first five years of a child's life because those years are crucial for brain development. 90% of brain development happens before kindergarten. So, it is the most high-reward, high-yield time to intervene in a child's life. So, I want to talk to you today about what MFN does, and just a side note, I know we have given you a lot of information. Don't panic, we're not going to read all the slides, but I am going to touch on some information on each of them, so I promise we'll move fast. We think about our work at MFN in three different buckets. We, obviously, a lot of our interaction with you all is around program, management, support, and oversight. We also have a robust public policy and advocacy agenda, and then one of our newest offerings is thinking about innovation and impact, and sort of what lies ahead for the future of early childhood. So, in terms of programs, I know it's a lot of information, but just some highlights. This slide gives you a This slide gives you a sense of the breadth of the work we do across the state. We run three statewide networks, the Childcare Resource Centers, the PATTY Centers, or Family Support Centers that you heard about earlier, and we are also the largest early Head Start grantee in the state. In addition, we are the federal community-based child abuse prevention designee for Maryland. And then again, these programs intersect with our public policy and advocacy agenda. This map shows you our programs all over the state. Each color denotes a different program. You have copies of these slides, so really, I'm just trying to give you a sense of the geographic diversity and the numerous communities we support and represent. So a little bit about MFN by the numbers. The data you see in front of you gives you a sense of how many people and the myriad ways MFN engages across the state of Maryland. You see parents supported to achieve economic self-sufficiency, families supported for strength and resiliency, and providers supported to provide high-quality early care and learning. I'm gonna just call out two numbers because I think they're both impressive and give you a sense of our work. We run Locate Child Care. It's part of the CCRC network, and our role is the state coordinating entity. Total families searching for childcare last year equal, on Locate's platform, equals 23,569. That's a lot. And at the same time, our Childcare Resource Centers had various support touchpoints with individual providers numbering 17,683 in the last year. So that gives you just a tiny sense of the sort of scope and integration of our work into the field of childcare. So moving on to an example of our innovation and impact work is growing opportunities for family childcare, and I think this is a really illustrative example of MFN's work. So I'm gonna highlight this for just a second. GoFCC is a workforce pipeline cohort program that recruits and supports women in opening family childcare businesses. There are three parts to the program: getting through licensure, business training for financial sustainability, and a focus on high quality. Why is this important? And you heard a little bit of this from Ruby a few minutes ago. Nationally, family childcare has been declining for decades, and the same is true in Maryland. And this matters because huge swaths of our state are primarily served by family childcare. So we need them. The reason I'm going into this detail about GoFCC is because I think it's a good example of how those three buckets of work produce outcomes for the state. So we learned about GoFCC when it started at our Childcare Resource Center in Montgomery County. MFN's public policy team then advocated for a bill in the General Assembly to provide pilot funding to replicate GoFCC in three additional locales. MFN then used our resources not only to implement the work, to monitor the work, but we commissioned an independent program evaluation to assess its effectiveness. And we have actually expanded the work to five regions of the state now because we have been able to raise additional federal funds and philanthropic funds. And just to hopefully knock your socks off about what GoFCC has been able to accomplish in two and a half years, through this program, women have been able to open 210 newly licensed high-quality programs, which has added 1,473 new childcare slots to the state, and we're pretty proud of this program, you may have intuited. So I'm gonna pivot now to our public policy work, and why I have queued up GoFCC is because one of the big disappointments of this session is that our bill to continue the funding for GoFCC did not pass. And that's not for a lack of support and certainly not a lack of results, it's just the sad state of the budget situation in Maryland. But this is our entry point to say, we work on all kinds of things in Annapolis. In addition, of course, I want to mention we've been a huge proponent and advocate of pre-K expansion and mixed delivery with my predecessor being a member of the Kerwin Commission that wrote the blueprint. This was a hard session, you probably are very well aware, but we continued to make incremental progress, and we will, of course, keep pushing forward. So I'm gonna hand things over now to Mike Hirschenfeld to talk to you about some of our future-facing work. Mike?
Thank you, Laura, State Board, State Superintendent Wright. These next few slides are gonna be content-dense. I promise I won't be reading much of the details. You know, while the initiatives on these next slides are not the result of a grant requirement or request or invitation, I do want to say that the work that I'm gonna talk a little bit about would not be possible without the incredible partnership we have with the Division of Early Childhood here at the department. The purpose of showing these is not to get into the weeds, but rather to illustrate how MFN looks at the early childhood ecosystem. Think of these as examples for what's coming over the horizon, things we believe the field needs, and areas where important work may currently be missing. Based on our conversations across the state and our strong sense of current and future needs, these represent specific large work streams that we have begun. We're happy to come back and discuss the progress and these plans with this board at any time. We're doing a ton of work at MFN around data improvement at the program level, our organizational level, and statewide. In the coming year, one of the more novel pieces of work that we would like to lead and be a part of is around seeking to have the current K-12 Unique Identifier, known as the State Assigned Student ID, or SACID, pushed down to the local, or pushed down to the licensed childcare level to bring those children into the state's longitudinal data system. To get the ball rolling, we have both a draft bill and draft COMAR revisions that would be needed to operationalize this, and as I said, we would love to have a conversation with this board and the administration to talk about that. Our ability to connect statewide, leverage infrastructure, and maintain a future-facing perspective truly sets us apart. This is clear from the data improvement work we're bringing to the table, as well as our drive towards launching a statewide shared services alliance. Our initial launch of a shared services alliance within the next two months will support providers by giving them access to a curated resource hub, significant discounts on goods and services, and a statewide job board. A shared services alliance will enable us to bring the economies of scale that benefit large childcare chains to smaller centers and family childcare providers, saving substantial amounts of money and time for our providers across the state. This initiative could have a substantial economic ripple effect with the right support, and ultimately lead to significant gains in the supply of available slots, increases in wages and workforce participation, and local economic growth through partnerships with vendors providing these goods and services. And to just leave you with a bit of a visual, this map represents the roughly 6,500 licensed providers across the state who rely on the supports and services of not just Maryland Family Network, but all of the partners that spoke before us, as well as countless other partners across the state.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, before we open it up to questions and board members, I'll, you can call up individual members from either the first panel, from staff, and the few stakeholders abroad or any of our partners. I just want to make two quick comments. At the top today, we talked about those values of transparency, accountability, and partnership. And in that, want to draw on a couple of things. One, it is clear that in this critical work of early childhood, we at MSDE cannot and will not do this work alone, right? That this must be done in partnership. And particularly in early childhood, it is the web of community-based providers and the web of the supports that engage with community-based organizations that allow us to systematically support tens, if not hundreds, of thousands of young children across the state. And so just want to thank our partners for being here, but also emphasize that this is not just a feel-good. This is how we do the work of early childhood. The second thing I want to make explicit is, while we are making a lot of progress, and I think there's a lot to celebrate, particularly as we compare nationally about the work we're doing in early childhood, we have a real long way to go to continue build, building trust with our partners in early childhood. Numbers alone do not build, will not build this ecosystem. We need to attend to customer service, and I know these are priorities for Dr. Wright and for Ms. Neville Morgan, but I just want to state explicitly that we have to get a lot better as an institution on being reliable, being transparent, being empathetic in our interactions with families and providers, being responsive to the needs, being human-centered in the decisions and processes that we make. And we're not always doing really well on that. And so I just want to state explicitly that that is the expectation of this board, that we move in that direction. I think we've made a lot of progress, and I think that is evidenced in the numbers that we saw earlier around participation, that people are willing to participate, for instance, in childcare scholarship, and we've got new providers that want to come on. But I also know from conversations with, for instance, Hillary Roberts King, that, you know, our pre-K process, and we heard in January when Hillary joined, that we still have a lot of work to do to make that something that people are willing to do at scale, and not just our risk-takers and early adopters who are paving the way for the field. So with that, I just want to explicitly state that we have a lot of work to, a lot of ground to cover, and so just want to thank everyone for joining us and being in partnership as we move forward. Dr. Wright, any comments from you before I open it to the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Board members, questions? And we're happy to call up, call people back, either staff or partners. Dr. Lewis?
So I'm really curious, and I understand you may not have the data now, but how many students with disabilities and students with IFSPs are being served in natural environments or in the pre-K schools? I'd like to see that data at some point.
Okay, so we're noting that, and we'll be able to come back. Great, Ms. Medina?
I can't remember which one of our presenters today explicitly brought up that village mentality again, and I think that the breadth of the presentations today was such a clear example of the village mentality that we are building with these partnerships between the board, between MSDE, between our partnerships, and so I think it was just so lovely to see all of you guys work together and see those presentations back-to-back because that is the clearest example of the village mentality that we are continuing to support with all of the work that you all are doing. So thank you for such, for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Mr. Greer?
I just want to high-level thank everybody who came today. This is a vibrant ecosystem, to echo Dr. Michael's words, and it does take massive partnership across the board in order for this to work. So thank you to everyone who participated. I can feel it, I can see it. I do know that this is a difficult fiscal environment in order to do what it is that we're setting out to do, and, you know, there's always sobering news in terms of how many parents and children can gain access to early childcare across the state with support from the state. And I just want to note here, not just for this board, but for everyone, I think we all recognize that this is an economic imperative for our state. If parents and caregivers can be in work, then we have jobs, right? And so I am keenly interested in, and I don't think we have this data, nor do I think we collect it, to what degree are we able to determine parents, especially mothers, who are being able to return to work or being able to work as a result of childcare scholarships when those come back online? I think that program is fantastic, and it enables parents to get to work, and I would love to be able to see any way that we can focus the data in that way to better understand how our resources are going to that impact.
I just pointed at Laura and Chris, maybe if you want to join. That's an excellent point, Nick, and maybe just, I know you've done some work around this, a couple of comments. And Chris, if you'd like to respond as well.
I'll just say very quickly, I'm happy to forward you a study we did last year where we attempted to quantify the return on investment for the money put into childcare scholarship that feeds back into the state's economy, basically. So it's all imperfect. You know, we talked about data because there's a lot of missing data in early childhood, and we could be better, but there's no question that there is an economic return. So I'll send that study to Zach, and he can share it with the board.
And I would just add, Nick, that included in my presentation materials is the Comptroller's report on the state of the economy, which has a lot of that data in there as well that we need to track closely as this closes and reopens.
Yeah, fully heard. Appreciate the partnership there. I also want our staff to continue to look at that and pay attention to it and partner with you all.
Closely.
Exactly, right.
Great. And I do just want to also acknowledge you, Nick, for your leadership in leading our work group on early childhood and care, and just the work we're doing to better be engaged with the community. So it's early work, but thank you for your leadership on our board. Other questions or comments from board members? Well, with that, we're gonna take our long-awaited break for the morning. We will come back at 11:28. 11:28. We will come back at 11:28, 11:28.[351.91]
We are going to come back now, pleased to have, well, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wright for our LEA update of the month. We're pleased, I'll go ahead. No, you're good. Pleased to welcome Dr. Scott Smith from St. Mary's County. All good. Dr. Smith, I think you're the longest-serving local superintendent right now, right?
I think so, as of today.
Yeah, well, welcome. We're pleased to have you and thank you for joining us to provide us an update from St. Mary's and from all of our local school systems.
Most certainly. Thank you so much. So, good morning. Good morning, President Michael, Vice President Goldson, State Board members, Superintendent Wright. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I am Scott Smith, Superintendent of St. Mary's County Public Schools, serving my third term for the Mother County. And if you hear me referring to it as the Mother County, it's because that's where St. Mary's City is and that's where Maryland actually began. So I'd like to briefly discuss three topics today, and I mean briefly. And there are three Cs: collaboration, consternation, and clarity of purpose. And I appreciate you juggling the schedule because there's a fourth C and we'll call it congestion, because it's definitely, the roads are, there's a lot, there's a lot going on on the roads. So, collaboration. At our April superintendents meeting, Dr. Wright outlined the planned meeting structure for the upcoming year with basically three prongs. The first is continuing the collaboration through our regularly scheduled PIZAM meetings where we share updates, discuss timely topics, and then have an interactive conversation with oftentimes a spirited question and answer session included. The second prong will be a more formalized Maryland Superintendent's Advisory Council where we can unpack medium-to-long-term topics and superintendents can offer ideas and feedback perhaps a little earlier in the policy and program design process. And as LEAs are the implementers of all the decisions made in this room, this model really will ensure that we understand the urgency of our work and the impact of the initiatives considered. And the final prong will be superintendent project teams, which will be smaller, more nimble teams organized around a specific enduring topic or challenge where we can really work more deeply on that. And we're very excited about that. The superintendents appreciate this thoughtful, leveled approach to collaboration and look forward to the work ahead. The work ahead, the growing work ahead. That leads to the second C, consternation. We are all navigating a nation that seems to have embraced a flood-the-zone method of change, where suddenly everything seems to be in play at the same time. The time-tested practice of unpacking a problem by gathering real data and qualified experts to methodically find solutions is being replaced by what I'll call the federal ATEs, A-T-E-S, dictates, mandates, that often conflate and castigate and obfuscate. You had Dr. Lawson here last month, he was a math teacher. What do you think I taught? English. Mr. Guy knows. This is the opposite of how we do things in Maryland, opposite of how you do things at MSD and the opposite of how we do our work in each one of our counties, our schools, and our classrooms. We know you cannot command change. You have to build the case, explain the why and the what to do about it, and then build consensus and convince others to throw their hands into the work. This is where we look to the Maryland State Department of Education to be the levy that holds back the flood, oftentimes sandbag by sandbag. And we're here to shovel that sand into the sandbags. The superintendents are again thankful for your work, most recently with the flurry of executive orders impacting elementary, secondary, and post-secondary education. Again, back to the English teacher. Robert Frost, stopping by the woods on a snowy evening, wrote, "The woods are lovely, dark and deep, but I have promises to keep and miles to go before I sleep." We have promises to keep to 900,000 students and the thousands of staff who work on their behalf every day. And we're grateful for your leadership and we know that we have miles to go before we sleep or retire. So finally, the C, clarity of purpose. Let's not forget why we are here. Our most important work in southern Maryland right now is to inspire the next generation of classroom teachers to forge pathways and break down barriers. Our leaders, assistant principals, principals, and even superintendents all come through the classroom. So investment in growing the next generation of teachers holds the key to all of our futures. In southern Maryland, we held our second annual Teacher Pipeline Summit in late March. Calvert County, Charles County, and St. Mary's County worked with our AIB strategic partners from NCEE, staff from community colleges, four-year universities, members of PISTAB, members of MPAC, and the Maryland Department of Education to really drive into how to grow our own and keep them here. And I'd like to thank Kelly Meadows and her staff for attending both summits, making the trek down south to engage directly with our stakeholders, and then being part of all of the follow-up meetings to continue our work to move us all forward. This year's summit highlighted the Teacher Academy of Maryland, and we heard from students in the program as they're starting their journey to become teachers in Maryland. But we realize there is so much more we can do to support them, both before they enter the program, during and after. Working with our current TAM students in St. Mary's County, we have them serving as mentors to students in elementary and middle school who have that spark of potentially becoming a teacher later in life. They mentor them, they work with them, and they encourage them to consider all the opportunities that will be available to them once they get into high school and can formally be part of the Teacher Academy of Maryland program. In high school, seniors in the TAM program, which we've now started to offer to students in 10th and 11th grade, so they have their senior year open, seniors in the TAM program are being offered the opportunity to participate in the Apprenticeship Maryland Program, the AMP program. This then has them being paid for their time. And for many, it's the very first job that they have ever held. And then they can get familiar with the FDIC and all that other stuff. From there, we're excited to partner with the College of Southern Maryland to launch a dual early enrollment college program partnered with TAM focusing on earning and associates in the arts of teaching, bridging high school to community college to ultimately the university systems of Maryland to earn a bachelor's degree, an educational bachelor's degree with a Maryland 2+2 program, making it accessible, integrated, and affordable for them to become teachers in Maryland. And finally, lest we forget people who are not necessarily in our high schools, we've worked with, post-secondarily, the Department of Labor to have a registered teacher apprentice program where we hire people as full-time paraeducators, but only half of their day is devoted to actually working traditionally in the classroom. The other half of the day is continuing their coursework, shadowing other teachers, and moving toward being certified ultimately as a teacher in Maryland. We did all of this with the grant money that's been available by really taking a look at the LEEDs program and that infusion of cash. It is truly the future of education in this state. So, in a time where education is put in the spotlight, that's fine. That's fine. Let's shine that spotlight on the greatness in our classrooms and our efforts to grow our own. And I thank you for the time today, the flexibility and the schedule, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for being here and for the creative presentation. Probably the most creative of all the superintendents that have come forth.
Well, English, you know, English teachers, we want to make sure you remember the three Cs, so.
We'll remember this one. It's good. All right. Questions, comments, board members? Yes, Ms. McCusker.
I love that you're figuring out a 2+2 and figuring out ways for people to be getting paid to be working in schools prior to actually having their certification so that they're learning and they can support their families or support themselves while they're doing it. Because it's one of the big barriers to the profession, right? We have all these alternate pathways, but if you aren't getting paid along the way, how do you support your family? So I just, I'm really excited by what you brought today. And just so you know, yesterday was the National Day of Poetry. Just wanted you to know.
I have sent poems accordingly, yes.
Just wanted you to know.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. McCusker. Others?
All right.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. All right. With that, we'll turn it to Dr. Wright for our federal ESSR funding update.
Yes, and coming to the table is Krishna Talor and Donna Gunning. Is Donna coming?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, she's right. She's coming. What we're going to do is give you an update on where we are with all of our ESSR funds and then open it up for any of the questions that you might have. So Krishna, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm sorry. Good morning, President Michael, Vice President Goldson, Dr. Wright, board members. My name is Krishna Talor, Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Operations. Joining me shortly will be Donna Gunning, Assistant Superintendent for Finance. We are here to provide an update on the presentation we made a couple of weeks ago at the Education and Transformation Committee, Transformation and Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday. As all of you know by now, on March 28, we received a notification from US Department of Education of a change to the program that funded the education stabilization funding under what we call as the ESSR stream of funding, specifically the ESSR 2 and ESSR 3 streams. The change was communicated to us on 5:03 PM on Friday, March 28, notifying that the late liquidation period for the program had ended as of 5:00 PM on the same day. We were notified in the communication that SEAs have the ability to request a late liquidation approval once again on a project-by-project basis by providing two particular pieces of information. One, the how a particular project's extension was necessary to mitigate the effects of COVID on American students' education and why the Department of Education, US Department of Education should exercise its discretion to grant SEAs' request. Just jumping into a quick background, as shared earlier, the COVID relief funding came in three separate buckets in addition to the state funding under GEAR program. The ESSR 1, ESSR 2, and ESSR 3, in addition to the GEAR program, provided $3.4 billion of funding to the state of Maryland, which is about $600 per pupil for state's 860,000 students. Just as a reminder, that MSD submitted timely late liquidation requests based on the Department of Education's guidance in 2024 for both ESSR 2 and ESSR 3, also called SIRS and ARP. MSD had until March 31 of this year to liquidate ESSR 2 funding and March 31 of next year to liquidate ESSR 3 funding. In addition to the email and the notification letter that we got from Secretary McMahon on March 28, US Ed participated in a webinar with CCSSO Chief State Schools Officers, Oregon Council of Chief State Schools Officers, and provided some additional details. Most important then was that the extension was going to be provided at the sole discretion of the Secretary of Education and that US Ed was establishing a weekly review and approval process to expedite the process. At this point, it is our understanding that any states that have submitted requests post-March 28 have not yet received updates, to the best of our knowledge. In addition, US Ed also provided a communication regarding how the late liquidation request has to be submitted, what parameters, and what kind of information needs to be in the guidance. So, as soon as we received the notification, we communicated with our board, with the Governor's Office, Department of Budget and Management, as well as General Assembly leaders. We have been in constant communication with our LEA partners, including meeting with the chief financial officers as well as superintendent's meeting with LEA superintendents. Donna and her team worked with their counterparts in creating a form as well as a data collection mechanism to gather additional information related to the impact that we are going to go over in the next slide. One additional piece of information here is that we are closely working with our Attorney General's Office and counterparts, Mr. Schoen and team, regarding legal options. Donna?
So you're about to see a lot of numbers in this chart, so I'm going to try and explain them. And to do so, I'm going to put them in some buckets. So in total, the impact to the state is 232.1 million, meaning that some of that is the state's impact alone, some of that is the LEA's impact alone. And so that's how we have categorized these. The 127.5 is the state share, the 104.6 is the LEA share. And what makes them different is that for the state share, we have paid the LEAs, but we have not been paid. For the LEA share, they may have paid some vendors, may not have paid some vendors, but we have not paid them. So they have not been paid. And that's the difference between the two buckets that gets you to 232.1 million. Okay, so this is another way of categorizing this information, because there's a third piece to this. So we have the 232.1 million is also comprised of about 80 million in ESSR 2 funds, which SIRS or ESSR 2, that we had already submitted and had approved a late liquidation request, and we had already submitted a reimbursement request. So we immediately submitted that again, and then, once we got additional information from US Ed, we submitted it a third time. So we have not heard back, but we have submitted that one. The next piece was to resubmit the late liquidation request that was not, or was rescinded. And so that's the part where we worked with the LEAs to provide us project-level information at the request of US Ed. And it was, there was some good in this because it was also an opportunity for the LEAs to highlight and connect the dots of any capital projects and almost, not beef up, but like really talk about how those were necessary to address the impact of the pandemic and, you know, health moving forward. So that was the blessing that was in here. So we got all of that information together, we sent it to US Ed. What we did in that request to US Ed was we categorized it separately, differently to hopefully also highlight, or let the LEAs highlight the capital projects, which I think are the ones we're a little bit concerned about. So we separated those into academic projects, capital projects. And then we further separated them into subprojects within each. So think extended learning programs, tutoring, instructional materials, and then in capital HVAC, security, doors, windows, that kind of thing. And the reason for that was to hopefully organize this in a manner that US Ed got what they wanted and that it was easy for them to connect the dots and follow along. We did also, at the same time, submit a ESSR 3 request for reimbursement for the funds that we have paid but not been paid. And that's the $46.2 million request. We submitted that on April 17, and we immediately got a response from US Ed that said, no, this has to be in a late liquidation. So we have, are preparing that late liquidation request in the same manner as the first one, and staff are in the process of finalizing that now. The last little piece here is about $7.2 million that we are going to add to a late liquidation request in the event somebody figures out that, oh, wait, we can spend this money. Right now, there's about $5 million of that that the LEAs think they will not be able to spend. So, next. Okay.
Dr. Wright.
Yeah, I just feel really critical to say a couple of things. I think Scott said it well, this flood-the-zone. This has taken an enormous, an enormous amount of staff time. I just cannot say that enough. But I also have to really give credit to the superintendents and the CFOs. They're the ones that did all the legwork to get it to us so that we could package it. And this was done on a very short-term turnaround. I mean, I met with them, I think it was on a Friday, and basically said, we need this by like Tuesday or Wednesday. And so those CFOs and the superintendents did a yeoman's job of trying to get all this information separated into the buckets of the academic issues versus the capital issues. And I also have to give credit to Krishna and Donna and their team for all the folks that then gathered all of that information and packaged it in such a way that we could send it in. So this has not been for the faint of heart, and we have no idea whether this will or will not be approved. But I just think it's important for you to know that there was a lot of legwork that went into this from the locals and from the team here at MSD. And I really say hats off to everybody, because this was a, and you can imagine, knowing what's going on at the locals right about now, it's testing time, it's getting ready for graduation time, it's getting ready for end-of-year time, it's getting ready to close-out grade time. I mean, all of the things that go on in a school system, and all of a sudden now we say, okay, press pause for just a hot minute and get us all this information. So I really want to say hats off to the superintendents and the CFOs, because this was a quick turnaround time. And to the team who then had even a quicker turnaround time to get it to the feds.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Questions and comments from board members? We'll start with Dr. Johnson.
Thank you again for the report. I just wanted to know that you stated that you've already, the state has already paid out money to the LEAs. So what happens if the US Department of Ed denies refunding or the funding for the money that you've already paid out?
We're working with the, we're working with the Department of Budget and Management and the budget committees at the General Assembly. We believe that they will, it will be a loss or we'd have to be backfilled with general funds.
Yeah, can I just add to that? I think that's a really good point that Donna's making. We could essentially, we, the state writ large, not the department, so let me be very careful about that. This isn't in the department's budget. I was asked that question specifically by somebody. This is a drawdown from a grant. And so if we don't get this money, then the state of Maryland is on the hook for a loss of $232.1 million.
So would that be a part of working with the legal department of the state in trying to get the money back?
Well, that's up to, obviously, the Attorney General's Office. And Elliot has been instrumental in helping us with all of this. And we are engaged in two multi-state actions. Is that correct, Elliot? Right now, we are already engaged in two pieces of litigation.
Thank you.
Elliot, can you just provide us just factual information, just to remind us?
Multi-state group of attorney generals filed suit a few weeks ago regarding the rescission of the approvals of the stabilization funds.
Thank you. Ms. McCusker.
Has there been any indication on when we might get a decision?
Not yet. As they shared with us, as the US Ed shared with us, in the only webinar that they participated back on April 3, that they were establishing a weekly process that every Wednesday they were going to collect all the information. Thursday into Friday, the decision was going to be made, and the following week, it was going to be communicated. So it's been close to three weeks, and we are not aware of any state having received an approval since this decision. As Donna mentioned, we did get one feedback about our, one of our submissions asking us to submit it in another format, and we're working through that.
Have any states received a denial?
Not that we know of.
So nothing's been, nothing has been, okay.
They did say they're going to review on a first-come, first-served basis, so we tried to get ours in really, really quickly.
I can also tell you there's some national organizations that are staying on top of this as well. Obviously, the Council of Chief State School Officers, we get a regular communication from them on any change that anything has happened. That all comes to the state chiefs. There's another national organization, Ed Council, that is out there working on behalf of all states as well, trying to keep everybody apprised. And so when we get information from them, that gets fed over to the Attorney General's Office so that they're aware of what we know and the team is aware. And I've kept Dr. Michael informed as we move along.
Thank you, and thank you again for the Herculean effort.
No worries.
Dr. Goldson?
Thank you. So I just want to kind of drill this down even further. So a local education agency has worked with an organization, services have been rendered, under the expectation that the state will reimburse them for those services. So that LEA doesn't have that money. They've paid it out because, of course, they don't want to, like they can't pay their bills. They've paid. They've asked for reimbursement from the state. The state is now saying, we don't have the money to give you. So I just want to make sure our community understands that it's more than just the state who's being impacted.
Oh, absolutely.
It's all the way down to the locals. And if some of them were counting, and they're in the budget process, if many of them were counting on receiving that reimbursement in their FY '26 budget, and now they've been informed that they're not, then those cuts at the local level could be even more extreme than they are right now.
Yep.
So I just want everybody to understand that we are falling So, I just want everybody to understand that we are falling off of the cliff quickly.
Yeah. If we look at the impact analysis chart, funds encumbered but not spent by the LEAs is $56.7 million. And in that bucket, we have categorized it as they haven't spent it because we don't have that information. But in some cases, they have. And so, now, they're, or they have invoices from vendors that, you know, we helped with communication that here, we don't have the money to pay you, so.
Thank you.
I want to just bring these numbers into context for us as a board and for the public. So, at the very least, we're talking about $168 million of money that's spent. And so, that's those first three lines, right? So, we've got the 128 million of the top two, SIR II and III, that the state's holding the bag for. We have the next line that's 42 million that currently districts are holding the bag for. And then, that last, that last line, funds encumbered but not spent, as Ms. Gunning just mentioned. Some of those are unpaid invoices for work that's already been done, or tutoring services that's been provided, or services for vendors, right, who are doing, right? And some of these are, some vendors are not going to get paid. Some vendors are going to get paid, and that money's got to come from somewhere else. But if we look just at $168 million, for context, what does that mean? That could mean salaries for 2,000 teachers next year. That could mean the base student formula for 18,000 children statewide next year. It could mean 12,000 students in our pre-K program. We will have to come up with this money. The one good news here is that this is one-time money. So, this is not a recurring, right? We knew this money was coming off. But these are real dollars. These are not prospective things. These things have been spent. So, I just want to thank you, and I thank you in particular for Chart 8. This is really helpful, I think, to get specific on how this will actually impact. So, other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. All right, on that positive note, we will turn it back to Dr. Wright to introduce staff for the next agenda item, chronic absenteeism task force. And I believe we're also going to, we're going to get an update on the attendance toolkit, so this will be good.
Yes, indeed. So, Mary Gabel, if you'd come to the table. Mary's been working with our task force, and as you know, chronic absenteeism is one of the aligned metrics that we have with AIB, the state plan. And if you remember, our metric is to reduce chronic absenteeism by 50%. So, we're hoping to move that from 30 to 15%. And Mary's going to talk to you about what the team has done, the task force has done, and also what we have prepared to send to the local superintendents and principals to help them in this effort. Mary.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. I'm going to invite two members from a elementary school and from a local school system. So, have a seat. And first, sitting to my left is Laurie Phelps, who is the principal of Woodbridge Elementary School in Baltimore County. And to her left is Ryan Voklin, who's Assistant Superintendent for Student Services in Adirondack County Public Schools. So, we also have Hetty Chang here with us, and Hetty is Executive Director of Attendance Works. So, you're going to hear from all three of them. Also sitting out there is Walter Salie, who's Director of Student Services, and Lauren Holmes, who is Executive Director in my division. So, they are the strength behind all this work. So, we are going to begin, and I think I have the PowerPoint. We have it. And I think, so, we're going to, we want to update you, and hopefully, it will be good news in this one. We want to take a look at the trends in chronic absences. We want to give you an overview of the work that MSD has been doing. We want to talk about our partnership with Attendance Works, and that's why Hetty's here, and you'll hear from her in a minute. What we've done to look at students who are on the cusp, on the cusp means they're just ready and could go over to be chronically absent, and what can we do to keep them on the lower end of absences? We want to hear about the LEAs and our school leaders, who are incredible, and then what are we doing for next steps? So, with that, these were, this is some data. The data from 2017 to 2024. We all know what happened in 2020, 2021. So, you see this rise in state trends in chronic absences. Chronic absences are those students who are absent 10% of their days enrolled, and enrolled at least 10 days. So, if they are in school the entire 180 days, absent 18 or more, then they are chronically absent. What occurred is we're working, all the schools are working to get the chronic absent dated down, and then the pandemic hit. Numbers went way up, and now we're working to get them down to pre-pandemic, and we're not there yet. So, what can we do? Dr. Wright already mentioned, you were here, I think it was January or February, with AIB, who said, "This is where, excuse me, our baseline is for '22, '23, which is at 30%, and we need to cut that in half." So, that is the goal that we're working on, to reach the target for '25, '26 school year. So, what are we doing? We do have a task force that began a few months ago to gather folks together. I'll give you kind of a list of who's there. We have established a partnership, thanks to Dr. Wright and her support for this with Attendance Work, which is Attendance Works, which is a nationally-known organization. We are looking at the school climates, the survey, and what's the data? What's the data telling us about what students are doing and why they may not be attending school? We have, and you've heard from me before, about our mental health response team, which is a team that is working with all of the LEAs across the state in providing support to the schools and the LEAs in the area of mental health. We talk a lot about community schools. You know that we have six, over 600, 617, 18 community schools. This year, we're looking at 700-plus next year. Community schools, lots of talk in legislation about community schools and what they're doing to reduce chronic absences. You're going to hear about two workshops that we offered, the first with partnership of Attendance Works, two workshops that were held the first week in April, to really offer to all of our LEAs. We had approximately at least 150, 160 participants in each of those workshops, teams from our LEAs, to assist them and give them tools. One of the tools you've seen, which, and to reduce the spring attendance line, what happens in the spring? The weather gets nice, allergies, vacations, all kinds of different things. Want to make sure that there's no additional absences. And what do we do for those students that right are on the cusp? We have developed a Spring Attendance Early Action Toolkit, which you've seen a copy of. That toolkit and all these materials will be on our website. We shared these with those that participated in the work groups. And working this summer, we will provide another series of workshops, and they will get a Start of the School Year Toolkit with lots and lots of resources. We'll talk more about that. And then, we're looking at what can we do for guidance policy to address any issues that we may have in the area of attendance. The goal of the task force is to, of course, develop best practices, to look at trends, look at trends across the country. What are those best practices? How are our strategies working, which is why we're not working alone? This is not something that we want to do. We want to engage our partners, and you're going to hear from these two incredible individuals in just a minute. And we'll be looking at establishing guidance and toolkits that I've already mentioned. This is just an indication of those that are members of our, of our task force. And also, you know that there was House Bill 879 that was passed this year, this during the session, and it adds individuals to the task force, which we will do. Some of those are a member of the Senate, appointed by the President of the Senate, member of the House. We have a number of folks that they recommended, but we will add some, a public school student to add. We do have teacher representatives, and then we have social worker, health, other individuals. So, we will do a cross-check with who we have on our task force and what the legislation says, and make sure that everyone that should be represented is represented in that task force. The partnership with Attendance Works has just been phenomenal. These are experts in the field. We work with Hetty Chang, you're going to hear from in just a second, and Sue Fathergill, who is right here, local. Their knowledge, their expertise, their guidance, their support, their encouragement has just been phenomenal, working with the task force, working with Walt and Lauren and myself, to really guide us and give us direction, resources. When you look at the toolkit, you're going to see the number, the number of links that are within that document that LEAs and schools can go and utilize and personalize. Help us with the latest resource and research. Example, Connecticut has just done some phenomenal work. We have their documents and their documentations. I represent the military and was just at a meeting last week with the military, and the attorney for Connecticut is the commissioner also, and so I got to talk to her about their work in Connecticut. With that, I want to introduce Hetty Chang. Hetty is the founder and Executive Director of Attendance Works, a nonprofit organization funded, that started in 2010. It is the nation's go-to resource for attendance policy and practice. Hetty has served as a Senior Program Officer for Evelyn and Walter Haas Jr. Fund, co-director of California Tomorrow. She is committed to drawing strengths from cultural, linguistic, and racial diversity. In 2013, she was named by the White House as Champion for Change. We are proud to be a partner with Hetty. So, with that, it's all yours, Hetty. Hetty's in California, so she is three hours behind, but we want to hear from Hetty at this time.
Thank you so much, Mary, for that warm introduction, and it is such a pleasure to join you. We are so delighted to partner with the Maryland State Department of Education and all of you. As you know, chronic absence was actually already a significant challenge in Maryland and elsewhere before the pandemic, but the pandemic made it much worse nationwide and in Maryland. And while it started to decline, we know it won't simply go away. And addressing this issue is really a shared responsibility that requires all of us working together. We're delighted to partner with you because we think Maryland has the leadership, the community partnerships, and the commitment to a data-driven approach that will allow you to serve as a proof point for the nation. Maryland is well-positioned because of your investments in the blueprint for Maryland's future, particularly your community school strategies, your investments in behavioral and mental health. And this is why we were so pleased that Maryland joined, along with 14 other states, in committing to showing that we can reduce chronic absence by 50%, by taking a long-term strategic approach that really builds the capacity of districts and schools by starting with prevention. We've also deeply appreciated MSD's partnership in looking at your data on excused and unexcused absences, so we can use that information to think about how do we modernize our approach to truancy and align it with what we know are evidence-based approaches to improving attendance. Our goal here is to make sure that Maryland does not have to reinvent the wheel, but can leverage the insights that we have from our partnerships with states across the country and districts across the country about what works, as well as what doesn't work. And we know this is crucial because everything we do in schools depends on kids showing up. When kids are chronically absent, and you know this from your own data, it makes it harder for kids to develop the literacy and math skills they need by the end of third grade, achieve in middle school, graduate from high school. High levels of absenteeism can also affect student health, well-being, and the readiness for work in college. And when chronic absence is high, it doesn't just affect the kids who are chronically absent. It adversely affects everyone. It affects the ability of teachers to teach and students to learn. So, while I know there are so many challenges afoot right now, particularly now, making sure we can benefit from the investments that we do have in schools really requires that we rebuild a culture of attendance and engagement, and we are delighted to partner with you all.
Thank you, Hetty. Hetty's been a fabulous partner, and we really appreciate her guidance and leadership and being with Maryland hand-in-hand the whole way. So, I think we're going to move on. Thanks, Hetty. Hetty's here, and as you have questions, we can certainly bring Hetty back. Thanks, Hetty. I think I have to go through, maybe again. We'll be fast. All right. So, this is some data on our chronic absences in Maryland that our research department has done for us. And a critical piece is, these are a number of absences by a March collection. If you look between 10 and 15, at about the 12 and 1/2, at about 12 and 1/2 is where a student has a 50% chance of being chronically absent. Because if they continue those absences by the time they hit 18, which is at the top, then they may have more, but they are now chronically absent. But if we can do the intervention that we want to be doing all along to try to keep them from increasing those number of absences, and what can we do? And you're going to hear some of the things that we are doing. We did do a workshop. The workshop was on how to reduce the spring attendance line. We sent it out, the invitation to superintendents. We encouraged them to invite members of their team, and we said, asked them to join MSD, Attendance Works, and colleagues from across the state to explore how LEAs can encourage teams. And we said, "If you have a team, what can you do to enhance it and add members to that team? And if you don't have a team," and we were talking to central office folks, "and if you don't have a team, it's not too late to create a team to reduce the impact of the string, spring attendance line." As the school year nears its end, schools and LEAs can experience dips, and we know that from the data, on a daily and weekly basis. So, we looked at practical strategies to mitigate the spring slide. For the second workshop, which was two days later, we were really working to get these workshops in before they went on spring break, because we know once spring break occurs, then you're really moving fast. The second one was for MSD, Attendance Works, along with colleagues, to learn how to identify, looking at your data. Dr. Wright has said to us that she wants data collected more often than we're doing that, so we're looking at that as a next practice, and we'll mention that. LEAs are digging into their data to see how the chronic absent rates rise, especially towards the end of the year. So, it focuses on strategies to prevent students from hitting those 18 days. The toolkit that you have, that you got a copy of, that we have on our website, or keep... or putting on our website, is really addressing four things. And that is encouraging LEAs to look at their teams. I just mentioned that. To address right now, it's all about the spring attendance slide. What can we do? What are the strategies? And they were given lots of strategies in the, the toolkit and also in the webinar. How do we reach out to students? This is reaching out. This is talking to parents, not just on the phone, but in person. What's going on? How can we help you? And then also identifying what the barriers are. So with that, I want to introduce Lori Phelps. Just give you a little bit of her background. This is Lori. Lori is in her 11th year, serving as principal of Woodbridge Elementary School in Baltimore County. Prior to that assignment, she served as assistant principal in two different Baltimore County elementary schools, and taught various social studies and SAT prep classes for five years at Edmondson Westside High School in Baltimore City and Woodlong High School in Baltimore County. So she has high school, elementary, which is quite phenomenal. But Ms. Phelps is also a career changer. She began her education career after practicing law at a large Baltimore city law firm. So we have a principal and an attorney here. She received her master's degree. She probably needs both. I, I haven't been a principal for a long time. I understand that. She received her master's degree in teaching from Johns Hopkins, her law degree from Washington &amp; Lee. She has served in various leadership roles in both Baltimore County and the Maryland State Principals Association, Associations, and is a frequent education workshop presenter at both the state and national level. So I'm now going to turn it over to Lori.
All right. Well, thank you. It's interesting you mentioned the law background. I do think one of the reasons that my school has been so successful at chronic absenteeism is we do take a pretty tough approach about it. And that law background sometimes is helpful in getting across the seriousness of the education compulsory attendance law. Before I start, I do want to say, from all of the conversation that you all had this morning, my school is one of the 44 new full-day pre-kindergarten seats, and it has gone very well. We were full all year long with a waiting list. We have started registration. We will be probably 75% enrolled before May 1st. So it, there is definitely an appetite out there. I would also point out that we are one of your two Title I gold, five-star schools in the state. And a lot of that is because we earned 14 and a half points on the report card from attendance. So I am here to just kind of share with you the things that we shared with the other attendees on the webinar, so that you have an idea of some of the strategies that are working for us. You'll see on the screen, the data. We were at about 6% chronic absenteeism in 2020. That went up with COVID to a high of 28%. We reduced it the following year to 9.86, I think. And then we ended last year with 4.86. Just to give you a little context, that accounts for 432 students because we don't count pre-K. And that means 21 of those 432 students ended the year chronically absent. But the aha from us was that only nine of them were still in my school. And so one of the things that I talk about is the forgotten groups. When you are talking about chronic absenteeism, many schools don't track their children who withdraw and are already chronically absent. And so one of the things that we do, you talk about early intervention, we are meeting with parents in September. Because if your child misses three days of school in September, they are chronically absent. And if they leave, they leave chronically absent. And then that impacts the end-of-year chronically absent number. The other forgotten group that really is not tracked are your late enrollments. So, you know, we talk about 180 school days, and 10% of that is 18. But if you enroll halfway through the school year, you've only got nine days in my school. And you have to track that because a large number of those students also end up chronically absent. And our schools that struggle with that chronic absent number are often our high-mobility schools. And so tracking those withdrawals and those late enrollments becomes critical. We talk a lot about data. This is just one example of how we track data. Data can, it doesn't matter what it looks like. And certainly Ryan is going to talk about things that they do at the district level to help schools. I like to have my own tracking data because I like to put extra information on it that the school system may not have. Things like, the appendix was removed. That's not in our school, system information from students, but it's important for me to know. We color-code this. It is updated weekly. I want to give credit to my school counselor, Colleen Boyer, who does an amazing job. I have a fantastic team. We talk about attendance every day. In another two weeks, after I finish MCAP testing, I will get a report by 9:00 AM which of our CUSP chronically absent students are not in the building, and I will be making phone calls. It is not unheard of that I will be knocking on a door. I know exactly which 10 students could become chronic, and I'm not going to let them. And this report and the constant monitoring that we do about attendance is critical. It's color-coded. Those children at the top, you can see, if you look at the number of absences, they're already over 18. So I, I can't do anything about that for this year. But after that, underneath it, this was a report, I believe it was from March 24th, that we had. You can see, we are now on day 146. So those children who were 14 and a half are no longer chronically absent as of today. And so that is how closely we monitor that. We talk about the CUSP kids and, yes, go ahead. One of the, yes, you can do the next one. One of the things that we look at very carefully is when we have a required parent conference. And the required parent conference is in-person. We talked about the importance of in-person. And we give the parents at this meeting this attendance tracker. It was wildly popular at the MSD webinar. The chat blew up. Oh, can I get a copy? Can I get a copy? Can we change it?
Everyone in the state, I think, has a copy.
And I believe it's now in the toolkit, or it will be. And it color-codes the 94% attendance that we want to see. We color-codes that when it starts getting bad. And then we tell parents, put it on the refrigerator. Mark it down. You know when you run out of days, and we really need you in school. So that's one of the things that we do at required parent conferences. The required parent conference is educational and problem-solving in nature. We, along with giving them the attendance tracker and talking about how many days are left, we really want to determine what is the problem. In elementary school, it's really not that much school refusal. Really only maybe 5% of the children that we see that are chronically absent is because they don't want to come to school. It really is a parent problem in elementary school. And so we have identified the following patterns, and we problem-solve and have suggested ways to fix each of those problems. So you'll see on the slide, we talk about early dismissals. My PTA has a program where a child can stay in school for the full day, free of charge, for those that are chronically absent. For many of our families, they just don't have someone that can pick the child up on an early dismissal day, so they simply don't send them. We have solved that problem for them. We also have a lot of concerns about days before and after the holiday. Those are parents trying to beat the traffic. We will suggest an early dismissal after they've been in school, four hours, but we really discourage them from trying to beat the traffic. We talk a lot about children that are missing Mondays and Fridays. That's a custody problem. And the way we deal with that, we often get, I'll get a, a mother who often is the, the primary custody person, and she'll say, well, you call him because he doesn't listen to me. I have no problem doing that. And we make both parents come and attend the required parent conference because it really is inconvenient for where the children are spending the weekend for them to be back in school on Monday. And that's problematic. I write a lot of letters. That's probably the lawyer in me. And, you know, some of those letters indicate, you know, th, this is an issue during your custody. So those problems get fixed, but we have to identify what they are. Inclement weather. I will also say, we are a first-year community school. You just talked about community schools. We have spent some of our community school money on raincoats. Target, $29. That sounds high for a raincoat, but like you really need the good raincoat that has the hood, that'll stay up. We buy them boots. We've bought them winter boots. Children that have to walk to school, if you are not an elementary principal or teacher and you have not had to do arrival duty and dismissal duty in the pouring down rain, the umbrella does not stay up. Like you have to be clothed properly. And we have used our community school money to do that. And so thank you for that. Late arrivals also, same type of inclement weather issue.
All right. You can see why Lori's here for all the strategies that she uses. So thank you, Lori. We're going to get a different perspective. This is from the LEA perspective, and Ryan is here. A little background on Ryan. Ryan's worked in public education in Maryland for the past 24 years as an elementary school counselor, a pupil personnel worker, a middle school assistant principal, an elementary school principal, a director of student services, and is current position as assistant superintendent of student services for Anarundel County. In this position, he oversees school counseling, psychological services, school social work, people personnel, and wellness for Anarundel County Public Schools. Ryan has been a partner for us in particular. We meet with the directors of student services on a monthly basis. And Ryan has been our partner, and he's fabulous. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Ryan.
Good. Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to, to be here today and share this. I'll give a perspective from more of a district level. And I would say Lori's school is perfect in terms of the things we want districts to do. Because really, when I was a PPW back in 2007, 2008, the mentality was that the pupil personnel workers were the only ones who could address attendance. And we really are changing the climate, the culture around how we approach attendance. And it really needs to be from a prevention-oriented nature and that everyone in the school system, in the school building, and the community is involved around attendance. Attendance, as we know, is a foundation for academic success. So that's really how we support our schools. And we want them to change that mentality from addressing those kids who are already chronically absent to, let's look at, let's look at things from a multi-tiered systems of support. What are the tier-one things that we're doing around attendance to address attendance and get kids excited about being in school? How are we addressing our climate? Tier-two, how are we identifying those kids on the cusp of being chronically absent or just chronically absent? And what are the interventions we're putting in place? Whether it's mentoring, attendance groups, phone calls, home visits? How are we supporting those students? And so we encourage our schools to have two attendance meetings. One is on those tier-two and tier, tier-one and two-tier supports. And the other one is those tier-three and those, those PPW supports. We also have invested in a data platform called Analytics and Insights that we really got tailored to our school system. And we now get to look at data, our schools get to look at data live that particular day. We used to look at it on a monthly basis, get reports run. Now they can drill down to student groups, to grade levels, to percentages of chronically absent, and then identify what, who those students are and exactly what the intervention they want to do to support those students. And that's really allowed us to, to reduce our chronic absenteeism. I know we don't have the graph here, but in '22, '23, our chronic absenteeism rate for the system was at 22%. '23, '24, it was at 20%. And when we look at it today, at this point in the school year, we're at 18%. So we're making a reduction in our, in our chronic absenteeism for the system. So prevention-oriented approach is really important for us. Go ahead. We've really also, we've really engaged partners to address challenges. So I just want to talk about one really important partner, Attendance Works. We use our, some of our SRF funds to build a partnership with Attendance Works. We did a three-year, what we call a community of practice with three clusters in our school system. We have 13 clusters. And we identified three clusters of schools that are, that had challenges historically with attendance. And we got the principals together with some important members of their attendance teams, their community school facilitators, student services teams. And we met with them six times during the school year. And we talked, we educated them on how to, how to go from that preventative or, prevention-oriented approach. And then they got to share and collaborate interventions that they were doing, and then use those things, try them out, and see what was working, what wasn't. And then it really was a, the collaboration with other schools was, was something that they really benefited from. They also got coaching from Attendance Works in between meetings. And that was just really an essential partnership that we have and we still have. We also partner, we use consortium, our consortium grant dollars to invest in care coordination. We have a lot of resources in Anarundel County. But what we find with our families is that they don't always feel comfortable. They get overwhelmed with some of these resources. So we've invested in care coordination to have agencies kind of hold families' hands and actually help them access those resources to overcome those barriers. So those are just some of our partnerships. And then, these are just some ways that, that from what we've done in Anarundel, how we can support districts in equipping school leaders. Really, you know, we talked about using data, super important. We also wanted to, we, we also highlighted how we can make sure that everyone, everyone is a partner. We're really getting the voice of parents. I feel like in the past, we would send parents a lot of letters that made them feel bad about their kid not being in school. And what we, what we are doing now is, we're educating them on why it's important to be in school and then making them partners. How can we help you overcome these barriers and be, be an important partner to help your kid be successful with attendance? That's really been an important piece. We're doing a lot of, we're creating a place where schools can share interventions and resources rather than reinventing the wheel. And we're really looking at district-wide communication. How can we, as a school system, provide that communication to families? And then so schools can model that for their specific schools. So we are on a journey of improving attendance and reducing chronic absenteeism. And we, we look forward to, you know, reducing chronic absenteeism by that 50% goal. So thank you for, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ryan. Just a summary of where we are and next steps, and then we're happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned, we're going to do a second toolkit with the help of Attendance Works for the start of the school year, do a couple of webinars in the summer. So it'll be launched so we can get everyone started. So we'll have the workshops, as I said. We are going to begin a community of practice like Ryan did with the clusters in Anarundel. And of course, I spent a career in Anarundel, so they're near and dear to my heart. But we will do a community of practice with LEAs, principals, central office folks across the state. We are, as I mentioned before, with Dr. Wright's encouragement, leadership, expectation to make sure that we are increasing the collection of data. Jeff Sanderson, we are working with Jeff along with accountability and assessment folks as to what we can do. We've had a number of meetings to discuss how we can collect data more often. And that's never going to replace what the school is doing and what the LEA is doing. But it does allow us to look at the data, share data with you, and then also meet with our LEAs so that we can stress the importance of having students in school. We are going to be looking at coding and, and data collection. And as I mentioned, we are going to be doing a crosswalk between our task force along with the task force that is part of our legislation. But I want to thank Hetty and Lori, and Laura and Ryan. And we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you very much for the extensive presentation. Let's see, questions, comments from board members? We'll start with Dr. Millen McCarthy.
Hi. I love this presentation, and I love the prevention approach and the data that says if you're absent three times in September, you're on your way. So that's wonderful. I love the workshops, and I ask that you include non-public special ed facilities in, in offering these workshops.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Clash.
Thank you for that presentation. Really insightful. Just giving a strong emphasis on the early intervention. Just giving a strong emphasis on the early intervention, wondering how we're ensuring that, you know, staffing capacity is where we need it to be.
Ryan, do you want to talk about staff and capacity?
When you, when you say staffing capacity, you mean the knowledge of teachers in the classroom, counselors? Is that?
I was thinking, because it seems like a huge emphasis on early intervention.
Yep.
And so, we need staff capacity and numbers to, for schools that don't have, might not have as many resources as others. I'm just wondering, are we able to support them? And how are we supporting them?
Yeah, great question. I mean, I can give you one example. We've, with community school funds, we've created an attendance position. So, it's, rather than, the pupil personnel worker usually is, is supporting students when they get to a certain level of truancy. But schools are looking for support in that tier one and tier two space. So, we have created an attendance person that does some of that tier one, tier two programming, intervention, and support. And in those schools that have, have used those positions, it's educating teachers on why it's important that they're the first ones to reach out and connect with the families, you know, and, and just educating the whole school community around attendance. So, yeah, that's how we've kind of done it. But I do agree, maybe those schools that don't have that funding, there may be some gaps in that, those kinds of resources. I don't know if you want to touch on that.
Yeah, I would share. I had mentioned, we're a first-year community school. Our community school facilitator is an active part of our attendance group. And when we identify problems and barriers for families, she'll step in. She's the person that gets the raincoats and requests the boots. She'll make a home visit, drop them off. And so, for the community schools, it really just becomes, I think, a priority of what they want their community school facilitator to do, because that staff person comes with the assignments. Even in that first year where you don't get as much funding, you get the person.
I really appreciate that. And I, I think, in listening to your answers, I was thinking about these outreach strategies that I'm seeing and just who, how can, can all schools across the board really support this early intervention? So, thank you so much.
I think, I, one thing I just want to say is, if it is important to the leader, it's important in the school. And so, you're prioritizing it as a principal, the elementary school, it makes it important. Ryan, as assistant superintendent, it's making it important in Anarundel. If it's not important for the leader, it's not important for the others at school.
Might I offer one other comment, too?
Yes, please do.
There she is.
I, I think we both need to look at the additional staffing, but also how we make, we rethink some of the things that teachers do every day. Lori mentioned that she makes attendance part of parent-teacher conferences. Those are things that you're already doing, but not all parent-teachers conferences actually discuss attendance. How you greet kids when they walk in the door? How you, even sometimes places have done these very simple, "I missed you" when you cards that teachers can easily just write and share with the family. So, you're trying to make paying attention to attendance an integral part of the daily activities you do, hopefully not adding more, but maybe doing some of what you do slightly differently. And that's why the principal support is so crucial as well as district support. So, it's not on teachers to figure out how to do that, but they're having resources at the ready so they can make it an integral part. Because that's gonna then decrease the number of kids who need additional supports, which then makes the burden easier to manage.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mr. Paul.
Thank you very much. This is maybe a question for Hetty, but anyone who has obviously anything to add. I'm thinking about chronic absenteeism. I'm envisioning sort of two strains of it, like early onset, as you've described, is a more parent-inflected strain. And then, you have sort of late onset in secondary schools, maybe a different set of concerns or causes and different set of solutions, maybe. I'm wondering, this is really just a question about the literature, just, I don't know it. How much of the solution to this problem is about getting early onset chronic absenteeism right and then trusting that it, or sort of attendance is relatively sticky? And, or how much of late onset, how much of chronic absenteeism is left in the secondary years, even accounting for these sort of elementary school problems? Is that, is that a question that's been answered? Am I communicating the question clearly?
Yeah, I think so. Hetty, did you want to respond to that?
Sure. So, I, I would also, yes, we actually need to pay attention to both, the early onset, because if we don't pay attention to the kids who are early on, there is some research, actually, I think it was done in Montgomery County, that showed when kids are chronically absent, starting in kindergarten, it doesn't get better, there are actually long-term consequences for that. But what I would also say is, there are some kids who they do okay in elementary and maybe even middle, but then issues and challenges arise as they go into high school. Ninth grade, for example, can be a real challenge. And so, you actually have to pay attention both early and later. That's why you want to have the data on an ongoing basis. But I also think that we saw a significant increase in kindergarten chronic absence during the pandemic. And the challenges of our youngest kids not gaining the skills they need have long-term consequences, which make it even more costly to support those kids. And the only other thing I would say is, the strategies you use at elementary and middle and high actually do need to vary. At middle and high, you can use a lot of student and peer leadership to, and you need to engage the young people themselves in both the solutions as well as identifying the challenges. At the younger grades, there's much more about parent support and parent networking that can make a bigger difference.
Thank you, Hetty. Hopefully, that's helpful. And our research office has also done some research and adds data on some of exactly what you asked about.
That'd be great. I'm very curious. And Lori, forgive me for calling you Lori, I would've called you doctor or Ms. or whatever. I just forget the last name. I'll be so curious to see, in the next 10 years, you know, how, like what, of the, of the young people that you're working with right now and building those good habits and, and same in Anarundel, when we get it right at this young age, you know, what, what the effects will look like as we, like, filter on into the future? So, thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Medina.
Thank you. Thank you guys for this wonderful presentation. And Ms. Hetty kind of just hinted at my question, because I was really impressed to see on Slide five, where you were talking about utilizing the information from the school climate survey and also the mental health response team. And so, in that vein, I didn't see a lot of info or push on the qualitative data collection, like, are we doing focus groups with our students and our parents? I did see that a little bit in the Anarundel presentation. But I want to make sure that as we're leaning towards partnership and prevention and getting away from the punitive, that that's a part of it, too, right? And having those town halls and those conversations to, to dig a little deeper past, because sometimes when we lean in too much on the surveys, we don't know what we don't know. So, if we didn't ask the right question, then it wouldn't be captured. So, I just didn't know if, if the task force was talking about some of that qualitative opportunity.
Go ahead. Ryan?
Yeah, I mean, I can answer from Anarundel. And we, when we did our community practice with Attendance Works, student focus groups and parent focus groups were a part of every school. So, that was part of the community practice. And it goes back to attendance is everybody's issue, and it's important for everybody to be a part of it. And to your point, from the student focus groups and the parent focus groups, we got information that we would not have known just from the numbers. And we use that to kind of put kids into different categories of, okay, we're seeing trends from the student focus groups on this. This is a barrier to attendance. This is what we need to put in place in that specific school, right? So, so, yes, we, and we've taken that and used, Attendance Works has a number of great tools around focus groups and questionnaires. And we've used that as strategies for beyond the schools and our community, and our focus groups, and our community of practice. So, yeah, we definitely see that as a valuable tool.
And I did see that Anarundel was utilizing that, but I wasn't sure if that had kind of made it up to the state task force conversation.
So, today, we really focused because we were looking at what we did in the work groups. And the work groups were focused on what the LEAs were doing at the central office. And so, when we do a community of practice next year with the LEAs and we do a focus at the school level, so for today, we were really focusing on what we're doing at the LEA. But you're absolutely right. And part of the background of the folks are school counselors, school social workers, PPWs, who are interacting with students. And to Hetty's point, what you're doing with an elementary student versus a middle student versus a high school student, they are different strategies. And working with and doing groups at the high school level that you typically would not do at early elementary. But that's really important, and it's an important piece. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that.
Let's see, we have Mr. Greer.
Yeah, just following on to Ms. Medina. It's perfectly timed, well-aligned. On the, on the qualitative data part, I, I think that attendance, I think of attendance as a symptom of a larger challenge. And trying to get underneath of what that symptom is, I think I see us looking at the data in a way to really get creative into how to solve those with unique solutions and strategies. The one place where I just want to push us, and then it's not really a question, I just want to push us into a place of trying to understand, when we look at our climate data, when we listen to those focus groups, to what degree is this a families, caregivers, and maybe even students don't feel a sense of belonging in the classroom or in the school? They don't feel like they are welcome. They don't feel like they are being brought in. I think the community school strategy certainly helps with that. I love that. But I have a hypothesis that belonging is underneath a lot of this. And that's really what we're looking at, is families and students just don't feel like they, they're welcome or belong.
I think that's part of it. I also think good, good instruction, too, is part of it, when kids feel connected to that classroom, they want to come more often. I, in my opinion, I agree with you 100%. That's definitely part of the equation of this complex reason of why kids don't come to school, for sure.
Thank you. Mr. Chesterfield.
Yeah, I was wondering, how much does the economics aspect of an individual contribute to this chronic absenteeism? Especially when you come from, from homes where folks, folks' financial situation or even backgrounds, parents or grandparents or what? How much does, is this actually contributing to this chronic absenteeism?
It's significant. Particularly in my school, we have the highest homeless enrolled population in the West Zone in Baltimore County. And of my chronically absent students, 30% of them are McKinney-Vento homeless enrolled students. So, when we talk about utilizing the community school funds to provide things that would assist in getting kids to school, these are our families that use public transportation yet don't live on a bus route, on a school bus route. So, they are walking to school. They are dealing with multiple children in a family. They're living in, quote, "close quarters." They are getting sick. And so, they are legitimately absent from school for sickness reasons. When a parent is struggling with getting to work, sometimes they're not getting up in the morning and not getting the children out. And so, we do find that the higher mobility, lower socioeconomic families definitely have many challenges. And that's why when we do required parent conferences, it is problem-solving. You know, how can we help? Sometimes, we know a family that lives across a busy road that doesn't get a bus, and they'll help transport the children. And they exchange phone numbers. And so, it's really creative problem-solving that can assist. But that's what we find out when we bring parents in front of us, so that the entire attendance team, which includes the social worker, the school counselor, the assistant principal, the community school facilitator, and the pupil personnel worker, somebody's got some kind of suggestion that we can help that family.
Thank you. Ms. Channing.
Sorry. Thank you for all the hard work at different level, at the school level and district level. Yeah, and I know Lori just mentioned one good point about the, the high mobility group in terms of you do things that you can control and can monitor or can track at the school level. And I'm not sure at the district level what we are doing or how we, as our state board, can be more helpful.
I think one of the things that, that we are doing and can do is really dig into the data and to see where are, because when we look at that, it, data's not just to be looked at. Data is to be utilized and what can we do? And I think that that's one of the ways that we can really look to see what's happening. You hear these folks, they know their, they know their data. They're telling you what percentage, you know? It's not, oh, let me, you know, I, I've not thought about this in a while. They know their data. They're living it.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Gable, and thank you to our guests from local school systems. We really appreciate you being here and for this important conversation.
Thank you, Hetty, also.
Thank you, Hetty.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. With that, we are going to prepare to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Section 3305 B1 and B7 of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. The State Board will adjourn to executive session to discuss eight appeals, personnel matters, board leadership update. The State Board will return to the public meeting, I think, around 2:15, two, between 2:00 and 2:15. Is there a motion? We've got, let's see, Dr. Lewis, is there a second? Dr. Millen McCarthy, others in favor, please signify by saying aye, raising your hand.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Right. Welcome back, everyone, thank you for your patience. Oh, hold up, are we on?
Now we are.
All right, welcome back, everyone, and thank you for your patience as we finished our executive session. We have an exciting afternoon planned as we honor our Purple Star schools from across the state. I am, I'll just say, before I turn it over to Dr. Wright, we had a wonderful celebration last year to honor our inaugural cohort of Purple Star schools. To see the room filled the way it is today speaks to the work that our school and district partners are doing across Maryland, to really take this to the next level. So I am so excited for what we're going to do today, and I'll turn it over now to Dr. Wright.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. So I am honored to begin the recognition of Maryland's 2025-2026 Purple Star Schools. The Purple Star School program recognizes and supports the unique needs of students from families serving in our country's armed forces. Military families often move every two to three years, which means their children are constantly transitioning to new schools, making new friends, and adapting to different expectations. The Purple Star School program recognizes these challenges. Today, the Maryland State Department of Education is proud to recognize 23 schools from eight local school systems in our second cohort of Purple Star schools. Congratulations to all of our Purple Star recipients. At this time, I'm going to turn the program over to Mary Gable, who's the Assistant State Superintendent and Commissioner for the Interstate Compact for Educational Opportunity for Military Children, and Alex Reese, who is my Chief of Staff. Mary and Alex.
Thank you, Dr. Wright, Dr. Michael, members of the board, thank you for this recognition. The Purple Star School program was established in 2022, and the Maryland State Board of Education adopted a policy the following year outlining the criteria for schools to be designated as a Purple Star school. Schools seeking Purple Star distinction must demonstrate that they have gone above and beyond to support military-connected students and their families. Applications were carefully reviewed to determine that each school met all of the criteria outlined in the Code of Maryland Regulations and Purple Star legislation. The program requires designated schools to have a dedicated military liaison, an easily-accessible resource webpage, a peer-led transition program to help students get acclimated to their new school, and training for staff to understand the needs of military-connected students and their families. Last year, our inaugural group included eight schools. This year, we are recognizing three times as many schools. There was a 270% increase in applications submitted over the past year. Our Purple Star schools span grade levels, school systems, and communities, but they have one shared goal, which is to give military-connected students the support they need to succeed academically and socially. Here with us today are representatives from our Purple Star schools. For those who are here representing one of our Purple Star schools, we will call you up in your school teams so that we have a photo of each school with their banner. Schools will be called up in alphabetical order by county. We are also joined by leadership from several of Maryland's military institutions and from our veterans and military families. So I invite the following to stand, our military folks are over, they're in the corner, and we have one back there, so I'll find you. So Captain Burfield. You. Colonel O. Command Master Chief Raz Vulez. Colonel Chung. Command Sergeant Major Dietrich. Command Sergeant Major Moore. Colonel Gore. Captain Christian. And Lieutenant Colonel Temple. There he is. I asked him if he wanted to move over here, and he said no, he was quite comfortable over there with his friends. And also doing a little dancing, I saw, when you missed that with the music. Yeah, yeah. At this time, I'd also like to recognize our school liaisons. Dr. Wright mentioned that I'm the Commissioner for Maryland, and I have been the entire time Maryland's belonged to the Interstate Compact, so I feel very strongly and very committed to supporting military families, so this always means a lot to me. And our school liaisons that I'm going to introduce are just incredible individuals who serve the military families, serve the schools, serve us, have my back, and they're just really, really great individuals who belong to each of the bases. So Ms. Jennifer Cole Pharoah. Ms. Tashina Andrus. Ms. Dawn Thompson Simpson. Ms. Meredith McCandless. Ms. Matrice Brooks. Ms. Andrea Bridgewater McCarthy. And Ms. Lolita Gunter. So thank you for those, for your work.
And at this time, we invite all of our military officials and the State Board to the center here for a photo. We're going to go ahead and do all of our recognitions of the 23 schools, one by one. So we're going to invite all the State Board members to join in the center along with our military officials. Come on down. Ryan Vogelton is in attendance here with our administrators and military liaison. So first up is Manor View Elementary School. Today, we recognize Principal Laura Espinosa, Military Liaison Caitlin Smith, represented by Tricia Shipman-Lamire. Military families at Manor View Elementary School are invited to serve on the school's Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports Committee, providing valuable insight into the needs of military-connected families.
All right, everybody, big smiles. Dr. Vogelton, can you come up to? I can't see you. Right there, perfect. Thank you. Do you mind if we jump in with our school?
Please.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Totally. So are we going to take pictures with our school?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, come on in.
Excellent.
Port me.
Right in the middle.
Port me.
Okay, excellent. All right. Make sure I can see you. Everybody, big smiles at the camera.
Good job.
All right, thank you, and I think you're going to try to fold.
That's right, you keep the banner. Can head out this way.
Help them fold.
She's going to.
All right, you're staying because we're going to have a port me. All right, the next school. The next school that we're recognizing is Pershing Hill Elementary. The principal is Celecia Hardy, Military Liaison Christine Jackson. At Pershing Hill Elementary School, the month of the military child is truly a month-long celebration of military-connected students. For example, they are cheered into the building. Listen, you're the boss. I know when to stop.
Big smiles, everybody.
Okay, I, all right. I'll just say one more thing about Pershing Hill. For example, they are cheered into the building by staff and community members in acknowledgement of their sacrifices. Throughout the month, this is the month of the military child, active-duty parents and their children lead the Pledge of Allegiance over announcements. Congratulations, Pershing Hill.
All right, next up, we have Calvert County Public Schools, which has 10 Purple Star schools. Superintendent Andre Townsill is here today with administrators and military liaisons, and our first school for Calvert County is Beach Elementary School. Beach Elementary School is represented by Principal Brock Fulton, Military Liaisons April Kirkland and Melissa Sillsky. Beach Elementary School used the money from its annual Penny Wars event to fund this year's Month of the Military Child breakfast, showcasing the support of the entire school community for military-connected students and their families.
No, it's good, they should keep talking, otherwise. All right, everybody, look at this camera first, please, and big smiles, make sure I can see your faces. Thank you so much. There was somebody just in a sweater.
No, you're standing in the middle. Oh, sorry. Sorry, purple sweater wasn't paying attention.
Thank you so much.
All right, the next school. All right, the next school. That's great. The next school is Calvert Elementary School. The principal is Dr. Christie Harris, Military Liaison Heather Ferguson. Calvert Elementary School has a Wall of Honor that showcases military members and their families within the school community. The wall was designed with the help of the school's military families.
There you are, everybody, please. Look here, big smiles. Thank you so much.
Great.
Next up is Calvert High School, represented by Principal Andrea Young, Military Liaison Latia Perry, and Maypre Gray. To celebrate the Month of the Military Child, Calvert High School recently held a Military Appreciation Dinner. In addition to honoring military families for their service, the school shared several valuable resources for military-connected students and their families. This dinner was co-hosted by our next Purple Star designee, who will be introduced to in a minute, and catered by students in the culinary program.
Thank you so much, everyone. Look here, big smiles. So much, do we have anybody?
Yep.
Purple sweater.
Purple sweater. All right, the next school is Calvert Career and Technology Academy. Principal. Congratulations. Principal Carrie Atkins and Military Liaison Ashley Curtin. In addition to the Military Appreciation Dinner previously mentioned, the Career and Technology Academy has demonstrated its commitment to supporting military-connected students in many ways. Notable among these is the establishment of a 14-member Purple Star Committee, composed of school staff that meets bi-weekly to plan events and brainstorm ways to support the military-connected student population. Well done.
All right, everybody, look up here, big smiles.
Congratulations. Next up is Northern High School, represented by Principal Dr. Kevin Simmons and Military Liaison Rebecca Watson. The military-connected students at Northern High School are actively involved in supporting their newly-enrolled peers, serving on a committee that meets monthly. This committee is in the process of developing a summer camp for new students to aid them in establishing social connections and learning about the school prior to the start of the school year. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Well done.
Purple sweater. Can we hear your name?
Plausible deniability.
All right, congratulations. The next school is Northern Middle School. Principal Jamie Webster, Military Liaison Linda Wolke and Jessica Hines. The Military Kids Club at Northern Middle School is dedicated to making newly-enrolled military-connected students and their families feel supported from the moment they connect with the school, through such projects as making greeting cards to welcome the family to the Northern Middle School community. Congratulations.
All right. Big smiles, everybody, look at the camera. Excellent, thank you.
Well done.
I'm just worried what we're going to call the next person.
Calvert, you did a lot of good work.
Congratulations. Next up is Pawtucket Appeal Elementary Campus, represented by Principal Michelle Beckwith and Military Liaison Mary Beth McDermott. Pawtucket Appeal Elementary Campus hosts a Warrior Wednesday segment on its daily news show, sharing interviews with newly-enrolled military-connected students to introduce them to the school community. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Dr. Mike will take a step back. I'm sorry, I'm taking on Dr. Mike. Everybody, big smiles. Oh, I'm out of the job. Thank you so much. She's getting better.
There we go, got it down. All right, congratulations. All right, the next school is Plum Point Elementary School, represented by Principal Beatrice Gonzalez Wilson, Military Liaison Andrea Webb. At Plum Point Elementary School, support for military-connected students and their families is woven into the curriculum. The librarian, a military spouse, spearheaded a project to make welcome kits for newly-enrolled military children. The students consulted with the school liaison officer from Naval Air Station Pawtucket River to determine what items should be included to adequately address the needs of students transitioning to the school. Well done.
All right, congratulations. Next up is St. Leonard Elementary School, represented by Principal Tammy Rudzinski and Military Liaison Leslie Irvin. The 4th and 5th grade students and teachers at St. Leonard Elementary participated in a legacy project that focused on the War of 1812 and the significant role the St. Leonard community played in that war. This project helped students to better understand the military while also ensuring that military-connected students felt seen by their teachers and their peers. Congratulations.
Doing great.
Not yet, not yet, one more.
One more.
One more. All right. Are we good? Yes, we're good. The next school is Wendy Hill Elementary School. Leadership Principal and Military Liaison Michelle Schmidt. Wendy Hill Elementary understands that while transferring into a new school can be tough, leaving the school can be just as difficult. This year, the school is implementing plans to order enough yearbooks so that military-connected students who are not enrolled by the end of the year can still receive a yearbook with a message that reads "Once a wizard, always a wizard." Very nice, congratulations.
I thought they were clapping for me the whole time, so that's why. Dr. Mike, can you just step behind me? I'm so shy. Thank you. Big smiles, everybody. Thank you so much. Last one, I promise.
That's Dr. Mike.
Congratulations, and Dr. Townsill, you're off the hot seat.
Well done, well done, thank you.
All right, next up, we have Charles County Public Schools. We have one Purple Star School. And though Superintendent Dr. Maria Navarro cannot be here today, leaders from our school recipient are here. So we're very proud to recognize Indian Head Elementary School. Principal Shane Blandford, Military Liaison Marissa Ackerman are here today from Indian Head. Indian Head Elementary has developed strong partnerships with local military installations and organizations. Scientists from the Naval Surface Warfare Center participate in the school's STEM night, conducting hands-on demonstrations on military rockets, helping to spark students' interest in STEM fields throughout real-world experiences. Congratulations.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, of course, come on in, Amy.
Great, thank you. We're now going to recognize Frederick County Public Schools. We're proud to recognize two Purple Star Schools. Superintendent Dr. Cheryl Dyson is here today with administrators and military liaisons. We're going to begin with West Frederick Middle School. Principal Margaret Gilgallen-Joyce, Military Liaison Raven Mitchell. West Frederick Middle School excels at providing professional development opportunities for staff designed to foster an understanding of life as a military-connected student. For example, the staff receive annual refresher sessions where they are introduced to the school liaison of the local military installation and reminded of their role. Providing this training each year helps to keep staff informed and prepared to meet the needs of the military-connected students. Well done.
Thank you, everyone. Dr. Michael Seif, we're going to swing back behind the black tangerine. Just kind of keep stepping back. Excellent, perfect. Big smiles, everybody. Thank you. And we got a couple of cameras behind us. Oh, oh, sorry. Everyone, scoot this way.
Congratulations. All right, also from Frederick County Public Schools, next we have Whittier Elementary School. Whittier Elementary School is represented by Principal Lorcan O'Hare, represented by Assistant Principal Courtney Hicks today, and Military Liaison Randy Gonzalez. Since 2015, Whittier Elementary has worked with the local community and military parents to create a highly-successful watchdogs program. Watchdogs, dads of great students, our fathers, grandfathers, uncles, and other father figures, who volunteer for at least one day each year at the school, assisting with school tasks, ranging from monitoring entrances to reviewing flashcards with students. Congratulations.
Great, congratulations, thank you. From Howard County Public School System, we are proud to recognize two Purple Star Schools. Superintendent Bill Barnes is here today with administrators and military liaisons. The first school up is Bowman Bridge Elementary School. Principal Connie Foltz, Military Liaison Christy Conklin. Based on feedback from military families, Bowman Bridge Elementary School held a "meet and greet" for military families, aiding them in establishing new social connections and building a support network. Congratulations.
So Dr. Lewis, I'm going to have you move a little bit this way, so I can see your face. Ms. Medina, move a little bit here. Ms. McHusker, move a little bit. Perfect, there we go. I thought we lost you guys back there. Big smiles, everybody, perfect. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Oh, yep, come on in.
Congratulations. Also from Howard County Public Schools, we have West Friendship Elementary School, represented by Principal Dr. Deborah O'Burn and Military Liaison Dr. Tracy Williams. West Friendship Elementary School thoughtfully plans its professional development opportunities for staff, seeking input from military families and the school liaison officer for Fort Meade to determine appropriate training topics.
From Montgomery County Public Schools, we are proud to recognize one Purple Star School. And Superintendent Dr. Thomas Taylor is here today. The school is Glen Haven Elementary School. Principal Tara Strain and Military Liaison Eric Saosko. Glen Haven Elementary School surveys its staff to identify those with military connections so that the knowledge of military-connected staff can be leveraged to determine best practices for supporting military-connected students. Congratulations.
All right, congratulations. All right, from Prince George's County Public Schools, we are proud to recognize two Purple Star Schools. Though Superintendent House could not be here today, administrators and military liaisons are here. So first up is Imagine Andrews Public Charter School, represented by Principal H. Douglas Rice, Assistant Principal Bonita Gunn, and Military Liaison Mark Connolly. Imagine Andrews Public Charter offers a virtual new-family class that helps orient newly-enrolled military-connected students and their families, providing them with key information about the services available at their school.
You're good, thank you. Second Prince George's County Public School is Stephen Decatur Middle School. Principal Dr. Cecil Miller, Assistant Principal Mary Compton, Military Liaison Shayna Bradley, and Military Family Life Counselor Monica Williams. Student ambassadors at Stephen Decatur work hard to give newly-enrolled military-connected students a smooth transition, addressing issues that often provoke stress and anxiety but may be overlooked in typical transition programs. These efforts include showing the new students how to read and understand their class schedules and explaining the process for getting lunch in the cafeteria. One of the biggest, hardest things that first day of school.
Congratulations. And last, but certainly not least, from St. Mary's County Public Schools, we are proud to recognize three Purple Star Schools. Superintendent Dr. Scott Smith is here today with administrators and military liaisons. First up is Hollywood First up is Hollywood Elementary School, represented by Principal Aaron D'Enzo, Military Liaison Michelle Mourning, School Counselor Emily Overly, and Teacher Amanda Pasquale. The Military Family Life Counselor at Hollywood Elementary School offers monthly military parent coffees where presentations are given regarding the unique challenges faced by military-connected students. Congratulations.
No purple shirts. All right, the next school is Leonard Town Elementary School, represented today by Jennifer Frost, who is here on behalf of Principal Jamie Jamison, Military Liaison Ayana Foster-Kelson. Leonard Town Elementary School has thoughtfully infused its understanding of the challenges of life as a military-connected student into its policies, allowing flexibility to accommodate unique circumstances.
All right, and last school recognition is for Leonard Town High School, represented today by Principal James Copsy and Military Liaison Lauren Knights. The students and staff at Leonard Town High School have established strong relationships with the military community at Naval Air Station Pawtucket River, with several military-connected students serving on the installation's youth council. These students offer an important perspective on life as a military-connected student to the council and share information from Pax River with the school community. Congratulations.
Before we conclude, I do want to introduce representatives from the Department of Veterans and Military Families. We have Dana Burl, who is over there, and Lindsay Livingston, so welcome.
And if your hands aren't tired already, let's have one more round of applause for all 23 Purple Star Schools.
All right, with that, we're going to move on with our agenda. We're running a little bit behind, but I think we're going to make up time. We'll go ahead to next item on the agenda. Dr. Wright, you'll introduce staff for the federal workforce update on FEDs to Eds.
Yes, sir, and I'd like to ask Kelly Meadows, who is leading this work for the department, to come to the table and she'll provide the update.
Good afternoon, President Michael, Vice President Goldson, members of the board, superintendent. Thank you for asking me to share an update on the FEDs to Ed program, our initiative to recruit formal federal workers into the education workforce. So today I'll start with just providing brief context and a little bit of data, talk a little bit about recruitment and preparation initiatives that are currently ongoing, and with some information about how we can support these individuals once they get into the classroom, and then leave you with just a couple next steps. So as a reminder, on February 28th, Governor Moore announced a series of actions to help Maryland residents impacted by federal workforce terminations. He specifically charged the Maryland State Department of Education in partnership with the Maryland Higher Education Commission, the Department of Labor, and the Governor's Office for Children to submit a plan on how we are going to support these individuals into the education workforce. And we did submit a plan on April 14th. So as we have discussed often at this meeting, Maryland is facing a teacher shortage. As of March 13th, 2025, Maryland local education agencies reported a total of 1,627 teacher vacancies. And this was a special collection, we don't usually collect in March, but for this initiative, we wanted to make sure we had a clear picture of the teacher landscape. And as a reminder, when we collected the same data on the first day of school, there were 1,619 teacher vacancies. So unexpectedly, we saw an increase of teacher vacancies. Turning to our conditionally licensed teachers, we all know that teacher staffing challenges do vary significantly from district to district, and that is not a problem that is isolated to Maryland. We see this across the nation. We have districts that top out at having 17% of their total teacher workforce being conditionally licensed, and although the five biggest districts do make up a really large percentage of both our total teacher workforce and our conditionally licensed teachers, there are still smaller systems on the eastern shore that struggle with large percentages of conditionally licensed teachers. So turning to Department of Labor data. According to federal unemployment claims from the Maryland Department of Labor between November 2024 and March 2025, a significant number of former federal workers do reside in Maryland. So that, of course, is an opportunity. It's reinforcing that this is an opportunity for us to recruit. As you can see, the majority of those individuals who filed claims do live in Montgomery and Prince George's County. And if we go back to the previous slide just for a second, we can see that Prince George's County does have a 7% vacancy rate at this point, and they historically do have a large number of conditionally licensed teachers. Now, looking at total numbers, even though Montgomery is at 1%, if we look at the count, they do currently have 126 teacher vacancies. Now, the blueprint does establish a minimum salary of $60,000 for all teachers by July 1st, 2026. However, looking at the compensation levels for these individuals who were federal workers, we do see that the majority would have to take a pay cut to come into teaching. So that is why it is so very critical that we remove unnecessary barriers into the profession. So again, as a reminder, our local education agencies can employ anyone with a bachelor's degree. And what that looks like is they bring them in on what's called a provisional contract, and that means they hold either a conditional or a resident teacher license. The former is for an individual that's going to enroll in a traditional program, and the latter is for an individual who's interested in an alternative preparation program. Either way, those individuals have between three and five years to complete the requirements for professional licensure, depending on the subject area they're teaching. So turning to ongoing initiatives, I shared with you last month that we did expand our teachmaryland.gov webpage. There is a page now dedicated to federal public servants seeking employment opportunities in teaching. I will share with you anecdotally, we get emails and phone calls in my office every day, every day, from federal employees looking for opportunities, sometimes here at the agency, sometimes with our districts. So people are taking notice, I can tell you that. We will certainly continue to expand our webpage, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, as well as use social media platforms to articulate the full value of becoming a teacher, including the financial incentives, but also the non-monetary benefits, such as career stability and the opportunity to make a difference in children's lives. Additionally, MSD is partnering with the Department of Labor and our Maryland districts to attend recruitment fairs across the state. So as mentioned before, MSDE will need to attract candidates by clearly articulating the non-monetary benefits associated with teaching. This graphic, developed by the New Teacher Project, describes what they call a "teacher value proposition", and it's defined as the collective set of factors that shape teachers' experiences. This includes the mission and fit, working conditions, total compensation and rewards, and opportunity for professional growth. So those in public service may be likely to be attracted to a mission-driven career. This is why it is so critical that we really emphasize these benefits during our marketing and outreach. There are several existing financial incentive programs currently managed by the Maryland Higher Education Commission. You can see a few of them here, including the Teaching Fellowship Scholarship, and that grant application currently has an open window, as well as the newer Student-Teacher Stipend Program, which was part of the Governor's 2023 Educator Shortage Reduction Act. Now, it's not all about the money. There are barriers that aren't associated with finances. The cost of teacher preparation isn't the only barrier for career changers specifically. Those individuals with content knowledge do need flexible preparation and licensure options. I shared with you last month that the Professional Standards and Teacher Education Board did charge a subcommittee with looking at alternative pathways to licensure for individuals with content expertise. That work is ongoing, and their goal is to get a recommendation to the full board by their June meeting. Additionally, MSDE will continue to partner with the Maryland Higher Education Agency in working with institutions of higher education who are interested in developing flexible programs in specific geographic and subject areas. Now, what happens once we are able to recruit these individuals into the classroom? They need a different type of support than we would normally support a new teacher who has full preparation. It's going to be critical that LEAs provide professional learning and coaching that is geared toward the individual who does not have teaching experience. This needs to include mentorship, it needs to include job-embedded support and coaching, opportunities for co-teaching, ideally a gradual release plan, and just the overall remembering that retention is just as important as recruitment. We can get them in, but we need to support them in the way that they need to be supported to keep them. Luckily, the blueprint provides a strong foundation for federal workers. Given that the districts are about to submit their career ladder plans in July that will focus on the teacher leadership track of the ladder, we're going to start to see the shift into using those lead teachers, those professor, and those distinguished professor-teachers to provide that mentorship and support. And then this board recently granted permission to publish significant regulation amendments to the induction regulations, which, as you know, strengthen those regulations and provide more robust support for mentors and teachers, new teachers. Hopefully, we'll have those regulations back to you this summer, along with public comment. And then finally, some next steps. Again, MSDE is partnering really closely with MHEC, the Higher Education Commission, in this work, and will absolutely continue to engage all teacher preparation providers who want to develop flexible traditional and alternative programs that are specifically designed for career changers and individuals with conditional licenses. As we enhance our teachmaryland.gov website, our intention is to provide a more robust searchable index of teacher preparation programs. Currently, we have something that's static. We want to include a tool for users that helps them identify what teaching areas best complement their content expertise. And we actually just finished shooting a bunch of mini videos to put on our YouTube channel for individuals that are going to apply for licensure. And again, I mentioned the Professional Standards Board Subcommittee. Their goal, again, is to come back to the full board by June. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? Yes, Ms. Chang.
Thank you for the presentation. Yes, great news. I just have kind of thinking outside of the box, say, we grow it? How do we have any strategy to keep them here?
Absolutely, no, you've hit it. Retention is so very important, and I think that's why the work that this board is currently doing with the induction regulations is so critical. It could not be more timely. So absolutely, recruitment is only half of the battle.
Other questions, comments? A quick comment from me, slides four and five are perfect. I hope we can see, I'd love to see slide four and five a couple times a year, if, two or three, but presented just like this, I think gives us the magnitude of how many teachers and the impact percent-wise, both for vacancies and the conditionals. So very helpful. I'm looking forward very much to seeing what PISTEP has in mind. My hope is we might be able to work together with them to get something online, potentially, for next year. PISTEP, to see if we can, see how fast we can move with their recommendations. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have our 2025 Legislative Session debrief. Dr. Wright.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to invite Dr. Akilah Lean and Ms. Maddie Houck to come to provide you with the debrief following our latest legislative session. And Alex Reese as well.
You forgot about me. All right, well, good afternoon, everyone. We have wrapped up the 2025 Legislative Session, and what a session it was. April 7th was the last day of Legislative Session, or as we call it, "sign, die." As I shared with our excited leadership team yesterday, I did my happy dance on the very last day of session. This is a very full 90 days. And I want to thank Chair McCusker, who faithfully led our board's legislative subgroup every Monday night. And the many, many MSD staff who put in countless hours, sometimes in the evenings and on weekends, to ensure that we've done right by our students and our schools this Legislative Session. So let's go ahead and take a look at session by the numbers. Our lawmakers were very busy. 2,600 bills introduced between the House and the Senate. The Department and the board tracked over 300 bills related to education. Fiscal notes are always important, but fiscal impact of bills was a major factor in this current budget climate. And in several cases, budgetary impact was the difference between a bill passing or not in this Legislative Session. So the work that our team did in response to DLS fiscal note requests was really important. And then we submitted 124 pieces of testimony. So in terms of what the breakdown is there, so through our weekly Monday meetings in the mornings with our staff, a group of about 20 staff, and then in the evening with alleged subgroup, we engaged in an analysis of the bills and determined positions for each. We supported, or supported with amendments, Accommodation 23 and 1134. We opposed 17, and we shared information, that was the largest share, on 53 bills. And this is a further breakdown of this, so... And this is a further breakdown of this. So this chart answers the question, what was the outcome of the positions that we took as a state board? Over half of the bills that we supported or supported with amendments passed. Only two of the 17 bills that we opposed passed, and those two bills were heavily amended following us stating our opposition. So we were glad to see that. We were intentional about where we absolutely needed to take a position and where we didn't. The majority of the bills where we didn't take a position, 180 of those bills did not pass. An overall 70 of 333 that we were tracking, about one in five ended up passing. So, one, I'm going to speak a little bit to the Governor's Bill, the Excellence in Maryland Public Schools Act, HB 504, and then I'll pass it to our government affairs team to speak on other key pieces of legislation from this session. With this bill, we take some notable steps forward in two areas. First is expanding the teacher workforce, and second is community schools. So on the teacher workforce, there were three components of the bill related to teacher workforce. We want to, of course, address the teacher shortage. So it establishes and funds a Grow Your Own, or GYO, grant program that the department will run. We're excited about what that could mean, and there's lots of work underway as it relates to that grant program. It also establishes and funds a teacher recruitment campaign to bring more teachers into the profession. And then we will become a state that offers out-of-state teachers relocation bonuses to come and teach in Maryland. On the community schools implementation front, next year, it should be noted that there will be 715 community schools. So next year, half, over half of our schools in the state will be designated as community schools, which is really exciting. What that does mean is it means that we need to work more at the county level in terms of how we are supporting implementation. Our very small but very mighty team, led by Derek Anderson, will obviously not be able to support 715 individual schools. So what we want to shift towards in this year is countywide strategy, and so the bill, as passed, includes countywide implementation plans, rather than just a collection of school-based plans. It also allows local districts the ability to utilize a portion of the funds to provide central administrative services. You may recall that at the December State Board meeting, we had city schools come and present about their strategy related to community schools. They're only able to drive the strategy that they have through that central, some of that central administrative function. It also allows LEAs to pool resources to lower the costs for program delivery at eligible community schools. Currently, under current law, an LEA needs at least 40 community schools in order to be eligible for this, so it only applies currently to five districts. And now this flexibility will be extended to 20 districts, reaching 98% of community schools. It also expands the flexibility for funding usage. It makes evidence-based, in-person, in-school tutoring one of the eligible uses for the community schools' funding. And then finally, this is a very large program. This is hundreds of millions of dollars, and it builds in a program evaluation. So the department will conduct a study of community schools to provide feedback and suggestions for changes to program implementation. And then a few other things of note related to the bill. This is, it extends the Career Counseling Program. Career Counseling was always set to be a three-year pilot that would have concluded at the end of fiscal year '26, but it extends the program through '28. There are two programs that were established or continued but without funding to do so. The first is the Academic Excellence Program, which you heard a lot from Dr. Wright, related to the Academic Excellence Program. This would have been statewide instructional coaches that were to be deployed to support teachers in schools. It's an evidence-based practice, and it's something that we want to continue the work on. The program is not funded, so we had requested $17 million for next year, and it is not funded, so it will not go forward as initially envisioned. We will, of course, continue the training that we're doing for existing LEA coaches. We're going to explore options for ways that we can continue this work. And I should say that though the program was not funded, we are glad that this bill generated a lot of discussion about the importance of teacher support and instructional coaching, so we remain hopeful that this will be part of the conversation in the future. The Blueprint Leadership Program, I want to make sure that I represent this correctly because of how it is on the slide. So the Blueprint Leadership Training was established as part of the blueprint, and Speaker Jones and the House have been real champions for it. Our team has worked with the AIB to launch this program, and we have engaged hundreds of school leaders, district leaders, local superintendents, local school board leaders. The $1.5 million that was requested and not allocated this year was to, we would have been able to expand the program. We would have been able to also offer experienced and effective principals stipends to mentor our novice principals. So we're, of course, we're hoping that that would be funded. It was not, but the program at its current scale will continue. And then you've heard a lot about the Blueprint's requirements for teacher collaborative time. Over an eight-year phase-in, requirements for certain ratios of teaching to non-teaching time would have begun in fiscal year '26. There's a three-year pause to that implementation of the collaborative time policy. The original FY '26 collaborative time per pupil increase of $163 has been added as an inflation adjustment, for lack of a better descriptor, to the fiscal year '26 foundation, but they're not required, locals are not required to implement the collaborative time requirement for three years. And then finally, the pause in the Blueprint's planned increases for community schools' funding was amended out of the bill. So the Concentrations of Poverty Grant, the CPG, funding will increase as the blueprint had initially planned. So that is all on HB 504, and at this point, I'm going to pass it to Dr. Lean to talk about a few other bills.
All right. Thank you, Alex. Well, thanks, everybody, for getting together again. We are excited to just give you guys a broad overview of the bills that passed that specifically impact the agency. Some of these bills also have an impact at the local governmental level, so we'll talk through and a little bit more description on those. We're going to start off with our departmental bill. This bill was a bill that we introduced from the department. This is our childcare center's certificated staff ratio requirement. As you all might remember from the last board meeting, this was the bill where we brought it as a repeal bill. What that means is we were seeking to repeal language in the existing statute around the ratio requirement. So one provider to 20 children. As the bill moved through the chambers on both the House and the Senate side, we ended up having some conversations with the legislators, and we came to an agreement that it would be better to amend the bill. So what we ended up doing was, this bill has become, it became an alterations bill, which means that instead of having a specific ratio requirement in the bill, basically, it just says that the State Department of Education would be required to set the ratio. That is great news, because what it helps avoid is, in the event that we need to change the ratio in the future to, let's say, one provider to every 30 children, we wouldn't have to go back to the legislature every year to make that change numerically. This language is pretty broad set across the board, and it basically gives us the authority as an agency to set that ratio. So this will also give us flexibility when it comes to the regulations, where in the event we have to bring a regulation through COMAR to you all, it will already be in statute that we have the authority to do that. Okay? The next steps for this bill, again, is just to update, thanks, to update the regulations based on how the agency determines what the appropriate ratio would be.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see you. So the next bill we're going to discuss is the County Boards of Education Curriculum Guides and Courses of Study Discrepancy Bill. I think it's important to level set as we start, that this is essentially codifying MSD's ongoing responsibility and process to develop and provide resources that support our LEAs with curriculum alignment with our state standards. But this does, is it establish, is the guides and courses aligned with our guidelines? It creates a system for the state superintendent or MSD to hold county boards to account if, for some reason, their curricula or courses do not align with MSDE guidelines. And there's a pretty explicit set of steps that would take place if, for some reason, that came up and was brought to our attention. And it makes it clear that MSDE is responsible for having model lessons, model syllabi, to ensure that our LEAs are set up for success when it comes to aligning curricula with the standards for, with the standards that we set. As far as our next steps go, this is essentially the ongoing process of making sure those model resources are up to date so that continually they are able to, we are able to support our LEAs with materials that make sense given what the standards are today.
The next bill is HB 324. This bill is cross-fired with, filed with SB 293. This is the County Boards of Education Anti-Bias Training Requirements for County Board Members. So what this bill basically does is it resituates the requirement that county board members are required to participate in a training. It actually distinguishes that this training should be separate from, not as part of, the regular employee training. And so what that means is it's distinguishing that there must be a specific anti-bias training. It can be a part of the overall training program, but there must be a specified distinct anti-bias training. This bill was brought by a number of legislators. Like I mentioned, it was cross-filled, so there was support on both sides for this bill. And we also want to highlight that our next steps would be that the agency would be responsible for just making sure that the LEAs have all of the resources that they need. So our big step is communication, allowing them to know what the bill is asking them to do, which is, again, it's just distinguishing the difference between the current training and the anti-bias training. And we would also be there to provide any technical assistance or answer any questions that might come out of any questions. The big thing to take away for this bill, if you don't remember anything, just remember that this bill clarifies when and how often the county board members must participate in a training. So it says at least once per term, and we wanted to make sure that the legislation was clear this year that it is, you have to participate at least once per term.
All right. Next, we're going to discuss House Bill 672. This is the School Health and Wellness Personnel Assessment on Maryland Council on Advancement of School-Based Health Centers Bill. So this will have MSD partnering with the Department of Health to conduct an annual assessment on the status of our school health and wellness personnel within our LEAs. So what that means is we'll be looking into the ratio of student and health professionals by jurisdiction, by LEA, the vacancy rates in those positions, and we'll be looking to, going back to what Kelly was talking about earlier, recruitment and retention are important in all of our school-based professions. So we'll be looking at our recruitment and retention strategies as well, and getting feedback from our actual personnel on how we can improve those things. So this will be reported on annually by December 1st, and the first year that we'll be reporting on it is 2027. So as far as next steps go, we have about just over 18 months to work with the Department of Health to think about how we're going to coordinate on that data collection and ensure that all of our collections are up to date to meet the requirements of this report.
So with the anti-bias training bill that I just talked about prior to Matty, that one was a local bill. So I want to be clear that that is a local bill, directly impacts the county boards. This bill that I'm going to talk about is the Restorative Practices Bill, HB 197, cross-fired with SB 68. This bill requires MSD as an agency to develop a comprehensive plan for the establishment of restorative practices schools. So basically, what it means is that MSD would be in charge of putting together some sort of framework that any of the locals could use should they decide that they want to establish a school that is based in restorative practices. One of the big things with this bill is that it changed the language, which the statute previously said restorative approaches. It now says restorative practices, and so there are some definitions around what exactly does that mean. On the first page of the bill, you'd be able to see some of the details. Restorative practices includes conflict resolution, mediation, and personal accountability, which is really important for us and for the locals, to make sure that the students in the schools have the proper tools to be able to handle any conflicts that they engage in. So for this particular bill, MSD will be required to develop this comprehensive plan by July 1 of 2026, so we have a year's time to be able to put the plan together. And then after the plan is developed, we would be required to put forth a report in December of next year, 2026.
All right. Next up, we have House Bill 1473. This is the State Government Equal Access to Public Services for Individuals with Limited English Proficiency and Individuals with Disability. So this bill requires all state agencies, including MSD, to create a language access plan, which will be updated every two years after establishment. That language access plan needs to be established by July of 2028. And then on September 30th of every year, we'll be reporting out data on how we have gone about implementing our language access plan and metrics on the request for language access on behalf of the department. This will include translating vital documents that the agency has that are public as related to licensure and educator effectiveness. And then the state superintendent or designee will be sitting on a panel or an advisory board that helps all state agencies and advises them on their language access plans. And this is a board that will exist in perpetuity, at least as of this bill, in order to ensure that those every-two-year updates are meeting the expectations and the standards of the state. So as far as our next steps go, as we begin to get this advisory board off the ground, Dr. Wright or her representative will be joining the board and then meeting with that advisory board by the end of the year.
All right. The next bill is HB 879. This is a task force to improve attendance and reduce chronic absenteeism in school. So this bill is a great example of what we would consider to be a substantive partnership that the agency took with the legislature. What I mean by that is we were able to be very hands-on with developing this bill. So with the help of Office of Government Affairs, Office of the Chief of Staff, and Mary Gable's office, we were able to have regular meetings and conversations with Delegate Wilkins and Delegate Smith and the Maryland Legislative Black Caucus as a whole, who were the ones who were championing this bill. What this bill seeks to do is address a larger legislative, larger public policy discussion in Maryland around chronic absenteeism and how to address it. So basically, this bill establishes a task force, which MSD would be responsible for convening. And within a task force, it would essentially look like what we would consider like a research project. We would use the task force to develop different research points. We'd be working with a nationally recognized organization, which I believe we're working with Attendance Works currently. And so we would continue to be working with them and gathering research on, you know, how do we really address this chronic absenteeism issue? The big takeaways from the bill is that, within the task force, we would be needing to use that data to then establish categories and identify the reasons for chronic absenteeism. So this bill goes beyond just larger discussions around maybe why a student might be chronically absent. We really want to identify what are the different types of chronic absenteeism, and what are those categories, and, you know, are we really hitting the mark as a state as a whole? So we're really excited about this. The task force is already underway. The big next steps for MSD is just to make sure that we're adding in some of the additional representatives on the task force, one of which would be a public school student, a school-based health professional, and we're also going to be having a representative from the House and the Senate, who will be appointed by the Speaker of the House and the Senate President. So we're looking forward to what this task force produces. Ultimately, we would be required, as an agency, to update the regulations on attendance, and that would be due by December 31st of this year. So like I said, the task force is already underway. Mary's team is working really hard to make sure that we are on par for our timeline, and so we're going to be good there. By June 30 for 2026, we would also be required to publish a chronic absenteeism toolkit. So that toolkit would come as a result of the data that is collected in the task force. So again, this is a very lengthy bill, but we are, like I said, this work is already underway, and we're looking forward to moving it forward.
All right. Next, we have the Holocaust Education Assistant Grant Program Bill. This establishes a $50,000 appropriation so that LEAs can get grant funding to support teacher training or to pay for materials related to Holocaust education. teacher training or to pay for materials related to Holocaust education. We will be managing this grant, and we will be establishing our grant process coming up soon. Next, we have House Bill 477. This is the State Department of Education Family Child Care Homes and Child Care Centers Bill. I think this is another bill that's a great example of how our feedback and initial opposition to a bill helped inform final language that we were much happier with. So initially, this was a bill that statutorily set and changed the ratio of children under a certain age to adults in family childcare centers. Now, what is going to happen is that this bill requires MSD to work on an analysis of our regulatory requirements for childcare centers, for our family childcare homes, and then to ultimately release that report. We'll be evaluating things like what other states are doing, what their ratios are, and how those ratios relate to safety, quality, and operation. Our interim report will be due on January 1st of 2026, and our final report will be due on September 1st of 2026.
All right, and I believe this might be the last one. HB 1475. This is the Publicly Funded Pre-K Analysis and Report, the Mixed Delivery Model Viability Act. Basically, what this bill is, is it's a requirement for MSD as an agency to convene a work group with very specific members. You all might remember, last year, there was another bill that passed, and it had required MSD to put together a report. And we did do that. We submitted the report in September of 2024. The legislature was very happy with that report, and so this bill basically is just a follow-up to it. They had some additional inquiries that they really like to see us to provide some data on. Basically, the good news is that in the 2024 report, a lot of the data is essentially data that we could reproduce and present again for this report as approved by them. So the Division of Early Childhood is actually working on this now. Again, this would require us to convene a work group. In the bill, it just specifies who would be on this work group. We are asked to consult with some stakeholders in the early childcare area. And again, there are some specific questions that we would want to identify per this work group. Some of those include, what are some of the challenges that public, public pre-K providers in building or adapting facilities to accommodate pre-kindergarten students may face? Another example is, what is, how do we best use publicly-funded pre-K to provide a quality early childhood education for students with and without disabilities? So if you have any questions or want more details, it's outlined in the bill. We would be required to put together a report due December 31st, 2027. So we've got the next two years to flesh this work group out.
All right, one last bill that passed. This is the Youth Transitioning from Foster Placement to Successful Adulthood Program. This is a bill that works to break down barriers that exist for our parenting foster care youth. So this is establishing a framework for MSD to have the youth transitioning from foster care placement program. What will happen is DHS is going to be referring individuals to us for access to this program. We're already working with DHS to work on those referrals. We're going to need to do some updates to the CAT system, but that's fully within our capacity, and we're going to be implementing this by January 1st of 2026.
All right, and just to quickly close us out, there were a few key policies or programs that did not pass this legislative session. There were a number of bills on reportable offenses and on cell phones, and they did not pass. There were, and there were a few other bills of note here related to the educator clearinghouse that we discussed at a previous board meeting, and a curricular bill that did not pass. And then just want to sort of round out the summary here by bringing it full circle. So in August, the State Board adopted its legislative platform. There were principles that you charged us as staff with making sure that we were keeping in mind as we were moving through this legislative session. I'm not going to highlight all of them here, but just want you to know that we did very much take that to heart, and, and it was, it did inform our process. So a few examples, one of the principles was bolster investments in public education. Even in a difficult budget climate, HB 504, which we helped support, does make an inflationary increase investment in the foundation per pupil. Similarly, prioritizing fiscal accountability. There are a number of things like HB 197, the work on restorative practices, where we didn't want the momentum around restorative practices to, to cease. We wanted to continue that work, and so we worked to help make sure that that's able to continue even with less of a fiscal impact. There was a bill last year that would have been very expensive. That type of thing is not going to pass in this climate, but we wanted to move that work forward and still prioritize fiscal accountability. And then finally, equity-focused leadership. The work on community schools that I mentioned before is going to serve our highest poverty schools and school communities. There were bills related to youth transitioning from foster placements that we think were really important, language access bill, that chronic absenteeism work, and others. So just want you to know that when you, when the State Board adopts that legislative platform, it really does inform our approach throughout the legislative session, and we appreciate you for the direction that you, that you have provided us in, in that. And with that, I will close and turn it back over to Dr. Wright for any closing remarks, Dr. Michael for any discussion.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you to the team for your sustained work over session. It was a long session. And, but as evidenced through your presentation, you know, we were able to ensure that we were an active part of the conversation and really keep focused on the most important things and make some changes in the positive direction for the most part. So thank you for your leadership. I'll open it up to board members for any questions or comments at this time. Yes, Ms. McCusker.
I just want to thank the team and publicly, publicly recognize the amount of work that you put in. I, I don't think people understand how many hours goes into the legislative session, and this was a particularly challenging legislative session, you know, due to the fiscal impacts, you know, the state is feeling. And you guys were in it up to here the whole time. So thank you for all the work that you did on behalf of the board and MSD. It is, it does not go unnoticed or unrecognized.
Great, thank you, Ms. McCusker. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. All right, we are going to move things around just a bit. We're going to head to public comment now. As you know, we have an afternoon public comment session. Speakers will be called. We have two virtual participants, three-minute requirement. Mr. Hands will be monitoring the time. Board members will not respond to speakers' comments, but will take them under advisement. Comments should be directed to the full board, not to individual members. Written statements and other materials can be submitted to Mr. Hands, who will see that copies are made available. First up today, we have Daniel Katz on Maryland Seal of Bilinguality. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Awesome, cool.
Welcome.
So my name is Daniel Katz. I'm currently a student at the University of Maryland. I graduated from Northeast High School in Cecil County last year, and I got the Seal of Bilinguality my junior year in English and Spanish. And I'm speaking here to just talk about my experience with the Seal of Bilinguality and learning a new language in general. The first thing that I think is really important are like the practical aspects of learning, of getting the seal. I'm a very, I'm a much more attractive hire now that I have the Seal of Bilinguality and that I can prove that I can function in Spanish. My major is engineering, and there are not a whole lot of engineers who can speak two languages, so it's very helpful. Current trends in like the country show that by 2050, one in three people in the United States will speak Spanish. So that means the kindergartners right now are going to be 30 years old in 2050. So right now is, is a more important time than ever to get programs that help students learn the new languages and then prove that they know new languages. Second thing that's important is social aspects. I was talking to one of my friends about speaking here today, and she brought up a very good point that I want to reiterate. The words and language are kind of the vessel that we, we as humans use to communicate. Monkeys like screech at each other, and bees like to dance, but we have like the most complicated communication system on the planet that allows us to understand each other on a deeper level than any like monkey could. And when we learn a new language, it opens our, it opens us up to like a whole new world of people. If we teach our children to communicate in these new languages and we teach them new cultures, it's almost like being more human. It's connecting on a deeper level, and it's making us more like us. We have more compassion, and we're just like better at understanding each other. Understanding is a bit of a theme because this, my next point is that I better understand the English language now that I have learned Spanish than I did before. Like, I learned the word conjugation from Spanish class. It's widely known that learning a new language helps your first one, but I was very surprised like how much it has affected me. I better understand sentence structures and grammar because of my Spanish class. And I, I think I have been, become a more effective communicator because I have learned the second language. So all of that is to say, learning a new language is very, very helpful, be it from getting a job or just being more empathetic or better at communicating in general. Learning a new language and having the ability to prove that you know the language, like with the Seal of Bilinguality, is a wonderful thing, and it is very good that the Maryland public school system has it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next up, we have Melissa Scobert, or Ms. Schobert, welcome to public comment.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Schobert. I'm the parent of an 11th grader in Baltimore City and a former disability rights appointee to the Parent and Community Advisory Board. On April 24th, the Maryland State Board of Education issued a letter reaffirming its commitment to complying with Title VI and other relevant laws. In a separate statement, Doctors Wright and Michael pledged transparency in ensuring that all students have access to high-quality education, noting that doing so is a moral calling and that Maryland law, quote, "gives us this charge." Although Doctors Wright and Michael named race, ethnicity, gender, neighborhood, disability, socioeconomic status, and language spoken at home as protected, they failed to include sexual orientation and gender identity, each protected by the Maryland Education Code 26704. Given the commitment to transparency, I respectfully request that Doctors Wright and Michael explain why these two groups were not included in the list of student characteristics. As the parent of a trans kid, I'm all too aware that it is precisely this group of young people who are under threat, and as such, their omission from the statement was both notable and alarming. The statement is separate from the letter to the U.S. Department of Education certifying compliance. Why is there a distance between the statement and the letter when other states are making explicit their moral and legal duties? For example, Oregon responded to the federal government writing, quote, "There is no circumstance when it is okay to leverage children's resources as a political tool. We are standing up for rights of all Oregonians and will continue to promote diversity in our schools because we recognize it enhances learning outcomes." In 2021, this body adopted a model policy on bullying, so it should recognize the unwanted demeaning behavior that involves real or perceived power imbalance. And that's what this is, a federal government intent on bullying states into compliance. So I ask this board, what transparency and moral calling really mean in practice? If MSD is unaware of any legal authority obligating it to comply with the U.S. Department of Ed's request, as the letter noted, what's next? Will we comply with other federal initiatives that lack legal authority? Which ones? Are we going to let ICE into our schools to take members of our beloved community away? Will we next agree that children, quote, "sever the toxic normalization of transgenderism," that we ought to not to study disparate impacts of school discipline, or agree that colorblindness requires us to jettison certain classes like AP African-American Lit? All proposals contained in Project 2025. In closing, I request that this body affirm in writing its commitment to transparency by telling families exactly what its legal charge entails and whether, going forward, written comments to the U.S. Department of Ed will match its press releases and recorded video statements. Families and children deserve to know exactly what this body intends to honor and fulfill in the weeks and months ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. We will take them under advisement. All right, with that, we will move to the COMAR portion of our agenda. We'll turn it to Dr. Wright for our first COMAR item, 13A 1206.
Yes, Kelly Metz. Sorry. Kelly Metz is coming to the table. We are requesting that the State Board grant permission to publish amendments to the regulations under COMAR 13A 1206, disciplinary action. Ms. Metz.
Thank you. Good afternoon again. The purpose of these amendments is specifically to change some terminology. In the disciplinary action chapter of the regulations, and this, again, all goes to taking disciplinary action against an educator license or denying an educator license, we have traditionally used the word "charge" to describe a cause for which we would take action against a license. Anecdotally, we have heard from individuals in the LEAs that there could be confusion around using that term "charge" and that some LEAs may think that an individual has to be charged with a criminal offense in order for it to rise to the level of a cause against, or taking action against a license. That is not the case. That is not defined. So we are recommending that everywhere you would see that term, we replace it with the term "grounds," and it would be defined the same way, just for clarification, to ensure that there are, there's no misinformation out there. We also took the opportunity to add a formal definition for petition, which describes that formal request to the state superintendent of schools by an LEA, by a non-public school, or by my office, when we request that she take action against a license. So that is the extent of the amendments that are before you today.
Thank you, Ms. McCusker.
The Education Policy Committee unanimously recommended to the board that we give permission to publish.
Excellent. Is there any additional comments or questions? Is there a motion? Ms. McCusker?
I move that we grant permission to publish.
A second, Mr. Paul. All those in favor, please signify by sending aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, next, we have COMAR 13A 0507, Programs for English Learners. Dr. Wright?
Yes. Susan Spinato and Teresa Timmons-Parratt are going to come to the table today. We are requesting that the State Board grant permission to publish amendments to regulations under COMAR 13A 0507, Programs for English Learners. Didn't I say permission to publish? Oh, I'm sorry, and Carol Vandermark, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, President Michael, Vice President Goldson, Dr. Wright, and members of the State Board. I am Dr. Teresa Timmons-Parratt, proud Director of Multilingual Education and World Languages, and I have with me today Carol Vandermark, our World Language Specialist. We are excited to be here to request permission to publish amendments to two existing COMAR regulations and to introduce one new regulation. These proposals stem directly from the blueprint for Maryland's Future Work Group on English Learners and reflect Maryland's statewide commitment to multilingualism, language access, and an asset-based approach to education policy. This work also advances key priorities outlined in MSD's strategic plan, particularly Pillar Four, where resources for student success, and Pillar Three, college and career readiness, by ensuring that our multilingual learners receive equitable supports that position them to thrive academically and beyond. In support of these priorities, the first regulation we are presenting today is COMAR 13A 0507, Programs for English Learners.
You just let go of the button. Yep.
Oh, am I live again?
Yep, just let it go.
Thank you. So the revisions to this regulation address a key recommendation from the blueprint on English learners. The Maryland formally shift using the term "English learner" to the more additive and asset-based term "multilingual learner." So in Regulation 0.2, we updated terminology related to the Maryland Home Language Survey to ensure consistency across all LEAs. And in Regulation 0.3, we clarified language around the placement assessments that determine English proficiency, as well as the annual summative assessments. And these changes are designed to strengthen our statewide system for accurately identifying supporting our MLs. And Dr. Michael, back over to you.
Excellent. All right, Ms. McCusker.
The Education Policy again recommends unanimously, in fact, for all of the language-related COMAR today, recommends permission to publish unanimously.
Okay. Should we go ahead and do all three? Or do you, do you want to walk through? Are we in good, what do you want, how you want to handle it?
If you just want to say yes to everything, I can hush and go, thank you very much. It's up to you.
Is there any objection to bundling all three? Great. Um, the committee reviewed. I'll entertain a motion to approve all three regulations, permission to publish. Uh, Ms. McCusker, second, Dr. Lewis. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hands. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries for all three. Thank you very much.
Thank you kindly.
All right. With that, we have one agenda, one substantive agenda item remaining. Uh, Task Force on Cell Phone Use in Schools Final Report. Turn it to Dr. Wright to introduce staff presenters.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask Laurel Crassley and Hannah Oakley to come and provide this information. It's an information-only item. Uh, it's regarding the final report of the cell phone task force.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Okay. Um, so I just wanted, Laurel and I wanted to share an update with you all on the work that we have done since we um, last talked about this in September. Um, so we're going to go quickly through, since I know we're um, all a little restless maybe. Um, we're going to go through some LEA policy trends, um, an update on the state, what other states have been doing. And then we're going to walk you through the statewide task force that we convened and that our own Mr. Paul represented this board on. Um, and then go in and share an overview of the guidance document that the task force created. So the important thing that I really just want to continue to emphasize is that all Maryland LEAs have a cell phone policy. The overwhelming majority of them have updated that policy since the kind of return to full in-person learning, um, post COVID. So that's, I just want to continue to emphasize that we all have cell phone policies um, in the state. I know recently we've had a few districts that have um, uh, implemented some bell-to-bell policies for their district, which means um, across elementary, middle and high school, cell phones are away from the beginning of the day to the end of the day. There is no exceptions for non-instructional time to have them out during lunch, et cetera. Um, there's also been a couple that have implemented most recently, um, policies that are strict, most, most strict in elementary school and middle school, um, and then loosen up for high schools. And so that means they allow high schoolers to have their phones out during lunch or during passing periods in the hallway. Um, and then on um, district transportation too. I think one thing that, um, and I'll, I'll preview a little bit of what Laurel's going to cover. But one thing that our task force was really, um, really united in was providing flexibility for our districts. Um, and what we've really seen in the districts that um, have already designed policies is that they really design these policies intentionally with their own stakeholders. So through surveys, through pilot programs, through public engagement sessions. These are policies that districts have co-created with the stakeholders in their own community. So our task force really wanted to create a guidance document and not a requirement um, that districts adopt um, certain aspects of a policy. We really wanted to um, provide guidance and leave the details and types of policies that they choose to implement up to the local context. So as you can see, if, if you remember, um, when I did this in September, we have had quite a few more states um, enact some policies. Um, I have highlighted the policy recommended section because that is where Maryland falls. Um, the incentives policy, incentivizes policy, those are states that have put money behind this. So they're giving money to school districts to implement a specific policy. Um, policy required, those are usually, um, policy required and statewide restrictions. Those are usually policies that come down through the legislator, legislature, um, which was a tact that we really wanted to, um, we really wanted to empower our districts to create these policies and not um, involve a kind of statewide mandate. So I think Maryland in the policy recommended section is a little bit unique because a lot of these states just um, released maybe a resolution from the state board encouraging districts. Um, Maryland, we wanted to do a one step beyond that and create some guidance for districts um, to, to refer to. Um, and so I think, I would like to think we're a little unique in that sense, in, in this, in our subset of states. Um, and then, oh. That's, that's Laurel.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. Um, so yes, we wanted to give you all just a quick overview on, on who was on the task force um, and what our, our process for developing the guidance looked like. Um, so it included experts from across 11 different counties. Uh, we had 17 members in total, including Hannah and myself. Um, and there truly was a diversity of perspectives. So we had our parents, our teachers, principals, superintendents, our state board member. Um, and then even amongst that, for our teachers, you know, we sought out a special education teacher, a teacher that worked specifically with multilingual learners, just to ensure that, that truly all different types of students and, and a range of expertise was included as we developed this product. Uh, we began meeting in January 2025. Uh, we met four times over three months, um, through March 2025. Uh, and we really took time to, to dig into the research with this group and to look at what other states were doing. Um, to see, you know, what we would like to bring back to, to adapt to the Maryland context, what we'd like to expand upon, what additional resources we would like to offer to our sister, to assist our LEAs and our, our schools in, in creating a policy that was right for them. Um, as Hannah said, we, we emphasized flexibility. We wanted to allow districts to design a policy hand-in-hand with their own stakeholders, with their own community. But of course, there were, uh, you know, a wealth of, of resources that we also wanted to provide to support them through that process. Um, so what we developed truly aims to help districts strengthen their existing cell phone policies, um, to, to structure, you know, best practices around engaging stakeholders and building that investment in the policy that was created. Um, and to ensure that the needs of all students are addressed and included and considered throughout the development of the policies. Um, and then of course, I'd be remiss if I did not also add that, um, we leveraged a lot of expertise from in-house within X MSD. So we worked with um, folks from our Division of Student Support, our Special Education Team, our Multilingual Education Team, um, our Digital Learning Team. They all had the opportunity to review and to contribute um, their unique expertise and to influence this final guidance document that was shared. All right. So I'm not going to walk us through each of these sections, of course. Um, but I just want to, to preview what kind of information is included within the guidance that we have shared. Um, so you can see kind of how it's laid out in this document. Um, and you can note that a lot of these are considerations for implementation. Uh, they are not directives of this is what your discipline policy needs to look like. This is exactly what, um, you know, your emergency preparedness plan needs to look like. But it lists a whole host of considerations that we want, um, schools and LEAs to consider as they're building this out to create the strongest doc, um, policy possible. Um, there is a checklist, of course, for what we believed in our, the task force believed, um, a comprehensive policy consists of. And there are model policies outlined that districts can explore um, and, and select from. Um, it's not an exhaustive list by any means. They are free to pursue additional variations of those policies. Uh, but it is, I think, a, a really rich collection of, of models and examples um, to just showcase some of the best practices that we're seeing across the country. Um, one other thing I wanted to, to touch on is just that, um, we, as Hannah said, we know that policies are already in place um, across all of our LEAs. And there are some really strong resources that schools and districts have already created. And we wanted to showcase that. We wanted to uplift those. Um, so you'll see sprinkled throughout the document, there are um, different resources and, and different examples of this work already taking place in Maryland so that we can help continue that conversation and circulate some best practices that we've seen. All right. And then, um, finally, so while it was our um, ideal, you know, we, we were, we were committed to prioritizing flexibility at the local level. Of course, there were some through lines that we wanted to establish as best practice across all LEAs. Um, so for example, in addition to having policies that were rooted in research, we also wanted to make sure that the policies are rooted in data. Um, that, that LEAs had considered how they're going to collect and revisit and be responsive to various data sources and metrics as they're developing their plans and as they're uh, returning to their plans year after year. Um, you'll see that there is also a, a policy review schedule, right, that we have recommended that, that districts put in place. Uh, we know that this landscape is ever-evolving, that nothing in technology stays the same year after year. And, um, and so we wanted them to, to be transparent about when and how they're going to revisit and review their policy um, hand-in-hand with those same stakeholders to make sure that it, it continues to evolve alongside the landscape. Again, we know that, that emergency preparedness and, and families having access to their students is something that is very sensitive um, in our, in our current day. So just a whole host of considerations around how you're going to roll out that emergency planning, um, how you're going to, to make sure that all students and all families have access to information in the event of an emergency situation. And, and yes, so, so you'll see that while we do not um, mandate or issue specific directives for what the policy should look like, we do want to have some consistent pieces reflected in whatever um, policy is selected by the LEAs. And with that, um, we will open up for any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you so much. Mr. Clash?
Just one, just one, yeah, just one quick question. I know we got to go. But, um, with the emergence of wearables, earbuds and um, smart devices, I'm wondering, just cell phone policy, have we considered broadening that to uh, personal device policy?
So, um, one thing I'll note is that in that um, definition section, we also established that when we say cell phone, we're extending it to encompass um, all types of technologies such as iPads and earbuds and what's the new one, like smart glasses, right? So, um, when we say cell phone, that, that's an important kind of uh, something just to hit on that we mean this entire kind of um, group of technology that could be present in the classroom and, and affecting student learning.
To that point, I'm seeing Beats everywhere I go. All the schools. It's secondary schools. I don't. It's just not the instructional sound. All right. Uh, so thank you on that. Uh, Mr. Paul?
I just want to commend the team, Laurel and Hannah, for your energetic, thoughtful leadership through the whole process. You've taken one of the, the great, I won't call it a problem, but uh, concerns, the great, one of the great issues of our time in, in schooling. And you uh, curated a bunch of interesting people with different takes on the issue. And, um, you know, Maryland's not a big state, but in some ways it's a big state. Uh, wide range of experiences. You curated a lot of different, a lot of different approaches. Uh, energetically put together thoughtful, interactive discussions. And uh, I, I know we're all grateful for the, the tool that you've created here that's going to help not just districts, but also individuals and families that are looking to make decisions as a community. So I think the work that you two spearheaded is going to lead to outstanding things that are going to empower particular communities to tackle this in the way that's right for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, Ms. Chang?
So I have to kind of add on to one view from the medical kind of viewpoint. I know some kids might have some devices that can monitor their blood sugar, things like that, that it will kind of um, sync with their phone or smart devices. Uh, is there any being addressed in a, in the discussion? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, thank you for, for raising that. So we, um, in our section around um, legal exemptions and accommodations modifications, uh, we, we highlight that that is something, a kind of a carve-out that needs to be made in these policies that in the event of extenuating circumstances or a health condition, um, such as the one you described, that students would have access to a smartphone um, and have a plan in place within their school to allow them access to, to their smartphone because it may have technology or apps that really can't be replicated on a school-based device. So that is absolutely um, uh, included in this, this document. And uh, it has been something that we've seen um, included in the, the policies that LEAs are putting forth as well.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? I just wanted to say thank you for the excellent work. Uh, one of the things I'd like for us to do as a next step um, is elevate some of the key recommendations into a resolution that affirms the work of this report um, that we may consider as a board really moving into next school year. Um, so it doesn't need to come next month necessarily, but um, something that really elevates the recommendations um, and just states in a clear way, um, and really affirms this work. So something for us to consider moving forward. Any final questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. All right. With that, uh, we've got our business block. Um, first on state board members' committee reports and updates. Let's see, we'll start with Mr. Hand, Mr. Hands on Ed policy.
I think we're missing both of our committee chairs right now, so I'll just go ahead and do both.
Speculously.
The Education Transformation and Finance Committee will meet on Tuesday, May 13th at 4 o'clock. And the Education Policy Committee meeting will meet on uh, Thursday, May 15th at 4 o'clock.
Ms. Oakley, are you able to check in for us on Transformation and Finance? We'll move to the next committee and then I'm going to move Mr. Greer and then you'll be up next. Mr. Greer, um, can you just update us on the Early Childhood and Care Work Group?
Yeah. Um, the State Board Work Group on Early Childhood, Education and Care, uh, which is under the Education Transformation and Finance Committee, will meet, uh, have its meeting at 12:00 PM on May 20th.
Great. You ready? May 13th, so Transformation Finance will be May 13th at 4:00 PM. Be there. Um, all right. Uh, any other updates, committee updates or items to share? Yes, Dr. Johnson?
Thank you, Dr. Michael. So I had an opportunity to attend the Maryland International Educational Consortium on, um, day on April the 25th. And um, it was an exciting conference and received a lot of information regarding how international students and that committee is really worried right now. Extremely worried right now.
Thank you for sharing. Other updates? Okay. Uh, any input on future agenda items that we'd like to discuss here? Mr. Schoen, we have a few opinions today.
Yes, President Michael, there are a few opinions to announce.
Would you like to share?
You betcha.
All right.
Um, in the matter of Stacy Hartwell versus Calvert County Board of Education, this was an employee termination matter. The State Board of Education affirms the decision of the local Board of Education. And Carrie McGraw versus Baltimore County Board of Education, this also was an employee termination. The State Board of Education affirms the decision of the local Board of Ed. And MR and JR versus Anne Arundel County Board of Education, this had to do with uh, bus transportation and the, the distance for walking, uh, student walking. The State Board of Ed affirmed the decision of the local board. There are several draft orders to report. In the matter of, um, these were all affirmed by the, um, president, by President Michael. Um, in the matter of the request for the removal, actually, this one is not. This, the whole board decided this one. In the matter of the request for removal of local Board of Education member Renee Dixon, the request was to dismiss for mootness and the state board voted. the request was to dismiss for mootness, and the State Board voted to dismiss the removal for mootness. And the other orders are Henrietta M. versus Montgomery County Board of Education. The President Michael dismissed this for untimeliness. And Stephen Price versus Howard County Board of Education, President Michael continued the stay of appeal while court actions are continuing. And UD versus Charles County Board of Education, President Michael dismissed this for failure to exhaust administrative remedies. And in CS versus Montgomery County Board of Education, this was a student transfer matter to a language immersion school. The State Board is deferring its decision and is seeking clarification of the applicability of a local board policy that was not addressed by the parties. The State Board is asking the local board to respond to its questions that will be in an order about the applicability of the local policy by May, by a date that will be in early May. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schoen. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Chesterfield, is there a second? All right. Mr. Clash, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.